I will call to order the Board of Supervisors meeting for February 21st, 2023. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
At Pledge of Allegiance, we declare the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and now we'll go to the manager for announcements.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to members of the board, staff, and the public for joining us this evening for the February 21st regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually and in person here in the main meeting room. If you are in attendance virtually using the Zoom platform and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the chairwoman calls on you. If you are attending in person with us in the main meeting room and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please address the board at the podium and state your name, municipality of residence, and topic you wish to speak on. Prior to commencing this meeting, I have a few short procedural items to cover. First, members of the public attending using Zoom platform are asked to remain muted during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the chair, they may unmute their microphone for their question or comment. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. And finally, this evening, a rule call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the Zoom meeting platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Gracie Griffin?
Here.
Ms. Dennehy?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, before we go to public input, we do have a very full agenda, so I would like to ask the manager if you could just help keep us on schedule with time check updates during some of our longer items. I appreciate it.
I'm happy to do that, Madam Chair. I just want to ask that for confirmation, would you like me to interrupt the speaker as they're talking just to announce a time check?
That'd be great, thank you, yes. If we have, you know, say, five minutes left in that time period just so we can stay on track because it's already going to be pretty long, and I know we have some big discussion-type items on here, so.
You got it, thank you.
Thank you, and now everyone is warned they may be interrupted if we're going long, so. And then also, I wanted to announce that we had two executive sessions, one on January 20th regarding potential land acquisition and one on February 8th regarding personnel. And now we'll move to public input. If there are any members of the public who'd like to comment on any item not on tonight's agenda, I'd invite you to come up to the podium to speak at this time, or raise your hand on Zoom. And I am not seeing any. Okay, so we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Anyone like to take a motion for approval?
Mrs. Patty moved to approve the minutes that are listed in the agenda. Second.
Okay, any changes or comments on those?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Okay, we'll move on to authorities, boards, and commission reports, and tonight we have our Scho library report from Ms. Warner included in our packet, but if you'd like to share any highlights, we invite you to do so.
Good evening. Thank you for accepting the report from Scho. I think the main highlight is the usage of the library by Ferguson far outweighs every other municipality. So as a Ferguson Township resident, I'm very proud of that, and I thank you for your continued support. If there are any questions about the report I submitted, I'd be glad to answer them.
I do have a question for you, Sue. This is Patty. I was wondering, by any chance, I missed Mama Pam Pam's storytime. Was that recorded?
I don't know, but I could check for you, or it probably was recorded, but if you call the library in the morning, they can give you the correct link.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I'm not seeing any. I wanted to thank you for noting in your report the opening of the nursing and lactation space at the library. That is great, and what a neat partnership that you all were able to manage, and congratulations on getting that open.
Thank you, we're proud of it. It's necessary.
Yeah, mhm. All right, there's nothing else. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to special reports, and just one item to note on our DEI calendar is Black History Month, and coming up later in the agenda, we have a proclamation on that, so we will look forward to that later in the agenda. Up next is COG and Regional Committee reports. The Human Resources Committee was canceled, so next is Finance Committee.
Thank you so much, that came fast. Luckily, most of our dialogue about what happened in the Finance Committee will be later in our agenda tonight when we talk about budget priorities and timeline. So I'll just take any questions about the meeting, if anybody has any.
Okay. Not seen any on that, thank you. Okay, next is Climate Action and Sustainability Committee.
Yes, so we were scheduled to meet this past week, but due to a lack of a quorum, we were not able to take any action. We had to adjourn the meeting. There was three of us that did informally meet with the Sustainability Planner who gave us a presentation on the solar power purchasing agreement. We just kind of shared what our discussions in our municipalities, and that was pretty much it. I did receive from staff an update about a trash issue over at the end of Blue Course Drive that is being addressed by COG.
Thank you, questions on that? Committee, yes.
Yes, Ms. Dennehy.
So it was, thank you, the issue that's being addressed by COG, is that the same issue that we talked about that there may need to be regulatory changes before enforcement can happen, or did we decide it's actually a sanitary issue and that code could enforce immediately? Or is that something else, or am I thinking of a different thing?
That might be something else, but my understanding is the property owner has been warned and they are taking measures to clean up the loose trash and
Okay.
get it under control.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, next we had Public Safety.
Just would highlight that we had the, received the fire report from 2022. There wasn't anything really exceptional about it, other than maybe the false alarm rate was rather high, and they will be working with code to try and reduce the number of false alarms that they respond to and working on a system to bring that number down. But code does enforce fines, but they are, they realize there's a problem and they're going to be trying to work to reduce that number. And the other thing worth mentioning was when I'd asked about the hiring, you know, the status of the hiring of the fire director, my understanding is we are prioritizing, or COG was prioritizing, the hiring of the Parks and Recreation Director over the fire director. So that was news. If we could. At the time, it didn't sink in, so it would be nice to know why the prioritization of parks over fire. I don't know if anyone in Executive Committee, if you'll be discussing that, or.
But the highlight. We'll follow up on that, yeah, thanks, good, okay.
I was just gonna, I didn't have a question about the HR meeting with the cancellation notice, but I'm just now realizing we are down to Agency Directors and the Finance Director at COG, but then the HR meeting was canceled. There seems to be a maybe a mismatch in workload versus meetings, so. That would have been the opportunity where elected officials would have expressed the recollection about the manager's memo about prioritizing public safety, et cetera. It would have probably been in the HR meeting and whatnot. It was canceled.
Think the timeline of all the events, but my understanding, the cancellation of the HR meeting, that was between staff and the chair of the HR. Dustin Best, College Township Director.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we have Park and Rec Authority on here. Was that capital, or? I don't think they met either, so I think that, I'll skip over that, okay. And then Executive Committee, which was mine, and we just met today, so I don't have a written report, but I will just highlight a couple things, or a couple things on there that we'll be talking about later. We did go over the solar power purchase agreement, and it was recommended to go with the Facilities and Finance Committee's suggestion of the 75% for COG, and we had the same kind of discussion that has been ongoing with that. We talked about the budget prioritization list that we'll hit later in our meeting. We had a presentation, not a presentation, we had a kind of an update on the Millbrook Marsh Nature Center Boardwalk feasibility study Phase Two. We were asked if we would be supportive of having a presentation at the General Forum, and that was supported with some, I guess, suggestions given, so to have it kind of focused on what's needed to be known right now. So it's more of a wrapping up of the Phase Two of the study, knowing that there isn't really a next step right at this point. So I think what I heard today is that staff is putting together a survey that will follow the presentation at General Forum on the boardwalk so that they can gather questions and input from the General Forum on the plan, the next steps, the study, so that wasn't concrete yet today, so we'll see what comes forward at General Forum. But the direction given was to keep it kind of pertinent to what the General Forum needs to know today. Yeah, did you have a question on that?
Oh, I'm sorry, just the, so there's going to be maybe a survey just of elected officials or the broader community about Millbrook Marsh? We don't know yet, because I just, again, harkening back to the whole prioritization of hiring versus starting new projects and kind of drumming up support for investing millions of dollars in Millbrook Marsh, meaning, you know, is that, are we already, are we already there, or?
I did not, no. What I'm, what I heard, and like I said, it was not at all finalized today, so we didn't see any draft questions or a draft of the list it'll be directed to, but my sense was it would take all of that input at that point.
At the General Forum, we can?
In the survey. Yeah.
Got it, thanks.
The presentation seemed to be more of a wrapping up of this Phase Two. The study is complete, they're presenting it.
Gotcha.
Next step would be the survey to kind of gauge where General Forum is at on a number of different things. Like I said, I didn't see, we don't know exactly what will be in there, but that was the sense.
A survey just about parks, though, not like fire priorities, just like the Millbrook Marsh.
Just about the boardwalk.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, very focused on that.
Thank you.
And that was it. We did talk about the budget prioritization, I'll get into that later, so I think that was about it. Any questions on that? Okay, so let's move on to staff reports, and we'll go to the manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Provided with the agenda packet is my report. I also just want to acknowledge a few things. The staff organized, well, I'll just start by saying a coffee and conversation that was held in January at Bayleville Community Hall, and many thanks to the Bayleville Community Hall for hosting us. There was discussion about the oil spill that took place just days before the coffee and conversation, and that became a focus of much of what we discussed, and there was a commitment for us to return back and dedicate some face-to-face, one-on-one time with conversation prioritizing the oil spill. Kudos to Assistant Township Manager James Progar. One may have ideas, but then it takes, it takes a lot to take on that initiative, and so he organized with outreach to Ryan Heiser, the Executive Director, with State College Borough Water Authority who agreed to attend, as well as Sean Kaufman, Emergency Management Coordinator, who also agreed to attend, and of course, our stormwater engineer Aaron Julin attended alongside Chief Patrick. So many thanks to the staff and our partnering agency representatives that joined us. I believe it was experienced as a very well-received public forum where we had an opportunity to answer some questions that were within our purview, but more importantly, allow for those building bridges, allow for those connections with some of those that respond to emergency services, such as Ryan Heiser representing public water, stormwater engineer representing, you know, hazardous material or contamination in the stream. So it's just, I think there should be a lot said to acknowledge those that take that extra time to show up and really give the resident that one-on, the residents that one-on-one time. And I'd also like to acknowledge that staff will be engaged in a leadership retreat from 8:00 a.m. till about 4:30, 5:00 p.m. on February 28th. While we have had leadership retreats in the past, this is something that is a little different in that while the department heads will be in attendance, we will also have our senior staff that was left to the department heads to select who would be attending. We look forward to a very fruitful, long day with good food, of course, but we also are happy to welcome Jeff Cook. He's the Penn State Men's Basketball, or excuse me, Penn State Men's Soccer Coach, who will be opening with a little presentation to talk about team building and transforming teams with new leadership. And so we're looking forward to him kicking us off with our leadership retreat. And then we'll have Charlene Stevens with GAVHR, who'll be doing a review of the organizational assessment that was conducted last year, as well as the Michael Landy representing HammerTech, who conducted the IT strategic vulnerability assessment. We'll be reviewing those assessments, and we'll be reviewing those recommendations, specifically the recommendations that'll be implemented here in 2023. So we're, and then we'll also be transitioning in the afternoon to talk a little bit about what does the transition look like for 2023 to implement those recommendations? What are some resources that departments might need as we move toward those recommendations? And then also remembering that wellness during a post-COVID world is so important, so soliciting ideas from staff as to what exactly would be useful to support individual staff members, but then also looking at collectively, what does wellness mean for Ferguson Township? So I just want to share with you, I think it takes a lot, of course, for us to juggle what we do to provide the quality services to improve, you know, daily life here in Ferguson Township, and then to take some time to engage in these types of, you know, what I'll call a hybrid of professional development, but also just getting engaged in the organizational culture and kind of building that moving forward, so. Just want to take a minute and recognize staff for all of their achievements, and thank you to the board for all the support that we're doing right now.
Great, thank you. Questions for the manager?
No. I wanted to say a thank you to our Representative Keo for his letter that he had sent and is included in the manager's report that was really helpful and focalizing. And I don't know if, Patty, if you wanted to follow up with, are we asking about follow-up with that right now? Or did the chair and vice chair and manager have any thoughts on follow-up with that?
I had a conversation. Yep, I had a conversation with Mr. Keo, and we're looking to explore what, if any, action might be appropriate, and if the board certainly wants to advance a conversation, I'm happy to talk with you about that. If you want to have a board conversation during a public meeting, I'm happy to put that on the agenda. Otherwise, I think, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Keo, but Mr. Keo wanted you all to receive that letter.
Thank you. Nicely done and very focalizing, so.
Yeah.
I would appreciate if we follow up with it, you know, it's helpful not to drop the ball and continue the conversation.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, much appreciated, and I think next step, as I was seeing, it was you concluding that conversation, and then either we're able to bring an agenda item back or follow up with the next report, so. follow up at the next report, so.
Yeah, one option that I, that I, that I would like to put forward, and I briefly had an opportunity to share with Mr. Keo, is, is having more face-to-face time, and maybe even just starting that through monthly or bimonthly reports, just for more frequent updates to share with the board in exchange of that dialogue. So more to come if that were to materialize. Otherwise, again, I'm happy to hear from board members on how you might want to respond, or if you want to have that chair as a, as an item for a discussion at a future meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's how I was thinking this through, so if we can just wrap that up, your conversation, and then prior to the next board meeting, we'll be able to decide if something's been decided there, or if we'll have an agenda item to follow up, so. I thought that made sense. Okay, very good. Thank you. Anything else on that? If not, we'll move to the Public Director, Public Works Director Report. If there's anything you wanted to highlight.
Nothing to add other than what is in the written report?
Thank you. Okay, and Planning and Zoning Director and Police Chief Reports, if there's any questions? No? Okay. All right, so we will move on to unfinished business. Up first is a public hearing of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 22, Subdivision and Land Development, Section 5B011C3, Standards, Chapter 27, Zoning, Section 2051, Rural Agriculture, Section 2052, Rural Residential, Section 2053, Agricultural Research, Section 2054, Forest Game Land, Section 20513, General Commercial, Section 20514, Industrial, Section 20515, Light Industry Research and Development, Quick, District Quick, Section 303, 3A1D, Traditional Town Development, and Section 710, Wireless Communication Facilities, presented by Ms. Worgo. Thank you.
Thank you. So provided with the agenda's draft amendment to Chapter 22, Subdivision Land Development, Section 5B011C3, Standards, and 27, Zonings, with Section 303, Traditional Town Development, 710, Wireless Communication Facilities, and all of those District Quick's that Ms. Strickland beautifully put out and had to read, unfortunately. So this amendment is focused on updating the code to reflect technological advances since the Wireless Communications Facilities ordinance was last amended in 2015 and resolve, sorry, resolve digital disparities within the township that COVID-19 exposed. So this amendment includes updates to the Quick Views, as listed Rural Agriculture, Agricultural Research, Rural Residential, General Commercial, Forest Game Land, Industrial, and Light Industry Research and Development. All local, regional, and county agencies reviewed the amendment, and those comment letters are attached to the memorandum from myself dated February 14th, 2023. Playing Commission reviewed the updated draft at the January 23rd regular meeting and recommended approval to the Board of Supervisors. Staff's recommendation is that the Board of Supervisors adopt the ordinance.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for comments. And I am seeing none. So we will close the public hearing and move to a motion.
I move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the ordinance named in Section 10, Item One of the Agenda Packet.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none. This is a roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's a roll call vote for resolution, excuse me, for ordinance number 1087. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Dinenny?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Madam Chair, it passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Okay, next is a public hearing of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, to adopt a resolution approving the Recreation Parks and Open Space Plan Update of 2023, completed by HRG, presented by Mr. Progar.
Thank you. The Recreation Parks and Open Space Plan provides a long-term outlook and vision for Ferguson Township Parks, Recreation Facilities, and Open Space. The update drives near-term and long, long-range planning, ensuring Township Parks provide recreational opportunities for all members of our community while directing decision-making and resources toward a defined vision for the future. Township's last update to the RPOS plan was in 2009. Ferguson Township engaged HRG to lead this initiative, beginning in August of 2021. HRG worked closely with the Parks and Recreation Committee to undertake a planning process that explores general growth, development, and redevelopment of open space parks, trails, and recreation in the township. HRG also engaged citizen input at the Winter Market in November of 2021, and the Municipal Mixer, the Greenbrier Sabro Park in August of 2022. The joint work session with the Board of Supervisors took place in July of 2022. This effort also featured a resident survey, as well as a number of key stakeholder interviews with the Center Region Parks Recreation, residents, and local youth sports associations. The result of these efforts provides Ferguson Township Parks with a mission statement, goal, and a plan to achieve those goals. Included with the updated RPOS plan are the recommendations, the priority matrix, and finance options to guide the maintenance and growth of the Township's municipal park system. RPOS plan was presented to the Board of Supervisors for review and discussion at the February 7, 7th meeting, regular meeting, and the RPOS plan presented this evening for approval is updated with the board's comments from that. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, this is also a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing for any public comment on this item. And I am seeing none, so I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move the Board of Supervisors adopt the RPOS plan.
This is Patty, I'll second. Sorry. Thank you. Discussion. Comments?
I was just to say thank you so much again to our consultants, HRG and Tracy Strickland in particular. It was just really well done, and many thanks. It was really well done?
Yes, and I actually, somehow along the way, I wanted to just ask a question about the mini parks or the tot lot sort of affair, because in one section it said we didn't have one, and then in another section it referenced the Overlook Heights tot lot that was taken away. So I was a little confused. Has that been taken away? Is it really?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great observation, and I mean, I'll yield to Tracy if she wants to comment on that. There's, and she's saying no. There's some history here, and, and Dave Modricker might have some insight, but I don't want to put him on the spot, but there was a playground tot lot, and at one point, and this is where I gotta, I gotta yield to Dave here.
I can say the wrong thing.
She's not seeing right.
It was there, then it was gone.
I was just gonna say, it was there, and the playground was gone, but the land is still, I believe, owned by Ferguson Township. There's just not a tot lot on it.
It's too tiny to put something on it, is my understanding.
It got removed because of the size.
It did. There were some, maybe some liability issues. The equipment got old, and then I think when we went to replace it, we found out it wasn't on our property.
Oh, is that okay? I had to refer.
Yeah, so to move it onto our property, there was really no longer the, the room for it, and so it just kind of de facto disappeared because it needed maintenance and couldn't be reinstalled in the same place. That's my recollection.
Okay. So it's, it's just considered open space now?
But nobody knows it's there, because it's just like a little patch of grass, probably.
It's not a liability.
Well, no, there's a picnic table there that somebody mows around, so.
Oh, okay, good, 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 good.
I have no idea.
Yeah, I think that, I think we did leave a picnic table there.
Uh huh.
Or a bench adjacent to the, the path.
Yes, exactly.
Oh, nice. Okay. Good.
Okay, so that still doesn't answer the question. Is it a tot, I mean, is it a?
A mini park or not?
It's been referred to for several years as a tot lot, but there's no longer a tot lot playground.
Okay.
Equipment, and there won't be.
Okay.
But it's just always been referred to, it's really like a mini open space.
Okay.
Lot.
Open space.
We've just always referred to it as a mini tot lot.
There, there is a Google Street View map of what it looked like in 2020.
It's quite my time.
And they took down the tree, too, because it was interfering with the wires, so, yeah.
Patty, you go ahead and call it whatever you want.
Okay.
And in the, and the RPOS plan of 2023, we'll refer to it as a tot lot that no longer has a playground equipped. Patch of grass.
Top field.
Right.
There you go.
Other comments? Questions? Okay, I'll echo those thanks. Very happy to have this completed and in this quality. It's great.
Yeah.
So this is a roll call vote?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Roll call vote for Resolution Number 2023-08. Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Dinenny?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Madam Chair, it passes unanimously.
Thanks very much, and thank you to our consultant for joining us this evening and for all of her work. Okay, so we move on to continued discussion on the solar power purchasing agreement, commitment to invest in solar energy, and we will go to Mr. Modricker.
So tomorrow, the, the working group of the Center Region Council of Government Solar Power Purchase Agreement Group meets. Tomorrow, I believe our, our goal or task is to accept the proposal that's recommended by the selection committee, bring that information back to this board. There's a lot of good information in, in handouts in tomorrow's meeting that I can also make available. There've been a number of presentations. Unfortunately, that was not our last meeting, but I believe you got a presentation from Pam Adams on this. The, the notes for tomorrow's agenda indicate kind of two touchpoints in March. One is that each individual participating entity or board makes a preliminary commitment, so to speak, of what energy consumption would be allotted to solar, and at the end of March, the final commitment, there is a contract that needs to go through legal review, and that, that process is being worked out. I don't know what else tonight you wanted to discuss, or if you've made a commitment or talked about the commitment, or, but that's, was there anything else we wanted to do tonight in that regard?
I, no. Thank you so much. That was a great overview, and the board is just left to have a discussion to determine how much we would like to allocate. We, as part of the RFP process, allocated 85%, and I understand Supervisor Dinenny had been following the other Center Region municipalities to identify what they've invested to be SPPA, and the only thing that stands out, I'll just acknowledge, is the 67% for Harris Township that I recall in an email.
It's very precise.
Very precise. Two-thirds, yeah.
Thank you, Dave.
All right. Rounding up from two-thirds.
I see.
Rounding up from two-thirds, yes.
Right. And then the school district, one with 100%, I think, last night. And then just to reiterate, COG today, Executive Committee supported the 75%, which I think is also what was recommended by Pam Adams for COG. She recommended 75%. So, and there was a lot of discussion around that, and like I said before, it was the same discussion we had, you know, around the contracts, the timing, the everything, you know, it was all pretty much the same conversations everybody's been having.
Today?
Yeah. For COG, so just kind of taking in what finance and facilities had recommended. So it was, you know, it was good. We didn't land on an exact percentage at our last discussion, so that's what we are going to do now. So I think, I think we were close, we were not far off, so if anyone wants to start and add some, add comments and, and suggestions?
I just had those questions from the public involvement. I wondered if you got the answers, and it was just things like with the Worth Township, like the, the denial of the land development plan for the two projects in Worth Township, like we only then have four sites to select unless Worth Township changed their mind. And then so I asked, who is the developer engaging with Worth Township? Because now I'm starting to ask legal questions and wondering if there's going to be a land development legal challenge? And I don't want to get involved. I honestly, I don't want to get involved with that, so, because my understanding is Worth Township denied the two plans for the two arrays in Worth Township. That's what was said last time.
Oh, okay, I understand what you're saying, so.
Yeah, so there were six?
Yeah, I asked today, and they're all still in play, so was the answer I got today. It was that they were all still options.
Dave Modricker, could you ask if Worth Township did or did not deny the development plans, if there needs to be a zoning change? Are, what I really wanted to know is where are we at in site selection? If there's, were six sites, and now the big one, State College School District, is now 100%? Because they're such a big taker of electricity, and some of the sites might be small sites, did them saying they wanted 100% then immediately drop some of the sites out of the running?
No, that's what I asked today, and I said no. Yeah, that's what I asked today, and they said they were all still options.
Okay. And also the thing where they said Worth Township denied the land development plans?
Wouldn't get into those weeds today on that, so.
So I think that's super relevant.
I think that's a good question to bring to the working group.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because we'll, we will see the contracts, too, when they come back.
Right.
This is about the percentage.
Understood. I guess what I am wondering is if there is a stopping point, if we pick a percentage, and that percentage says it's one of the Worth Township properties that the land development plans were denied, does that mean we're going to then launch a legal battle? Because I'm not interested. So that, other than that, I'm fine with whatever percentage that seems reasonable for our township, given our own array. But that's a big caveat for me, because nobody has come out and said that, I mean, we know what it means to have a land development plan denied. I don't understand why people aren't more thinking about that.
Well, I mean, there's still option, other options on the table.
Yeah.
For which development site to go with.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not, that's not the only one, so.
Yeah, those two are, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's one in Green County, there's, you know, there's others, yeah.
There's four others. There's four others.
Yeah.
Right. But then hearing that the two weren't taken off the table, but the land development plans were denied, that's just, I'm looking for some clarification on that.
Okay.
Okay. I'm trying to just look at my notes quickly. If somebody else has a question or comment, a suggestion, a percentage you want to put forward?
I will, I'll, I said it in the last meeting, I'm comfortable with anything from 85 to 100%.
I wanted to ask Dave's advice.
What's that?
I wanted to ask Dave's advice.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I wanted to just ask your advice on this.
On the percentage?
On the percentage?
I mean, you do this for us normally, so right now I feel out of my depth. The only thing I know is protect against legal liability. This is your domain. I don't really want to make the decision for you.
Yeah, so what I'll say really is influenced by our consultants that are on the working group and the, and the consulting team, and the presentations that I've seen, and the fact that we set our own climate goals as a township. So, you know, I think somewhere between 75 and 100 is where we should be. Then after that, it's really about managing risk. To manage risk, you probably want to be closer to the 75 to 85% number. To be the, the most environmentally proactive toward reaching our net zero goals, then you'd be at 100%, understanding that there's a little bit more risk if, in fact, the price for energy were to go down. I don't think that's highly likely, so I don't think, even if you went to 100%, that you've got that great of an exposure going from, you know, your 75 or 85 to 100, so.
And then efficiency in terms of us becoming more efficient? If we were to get 100 or closer to the higher level, does that still make sense? Like, if we're getting more efficient, or is there a ceiling?
I think we're okay, because we're, we're, what we're committing to is a percent of the total usage.
Okay, I see. So if our usage drops, then?
That was not my understanding leaving today, too, was that we're actually tying it to a kilowatt. We're actually tying it to.
An absolute number.
An amount. So we actually changed in the COG motion to identify the actual amount, parentheses, 75%, which, you know, so whatever we said, one kilowatt, roughly equal to 75% current usage. roughly equal to 75% current usage. So we would be tying a specific amount.
Yeah. So what I'm not certain about then is if we commit to 100 or a number rather than a percent, we don't use all that in any given year, how that gets sold, and what the exposure is for that.
When Pam, I believe... Somebody else, correct me, but I think when we asked last time, Pam said it can be sold within the group. So if there is another participant in our agreement group who wants to purchase it, they can't. Otherwise, we are paying for it. We're paying for it no matter what. We might be able to sell it and recoup that money, but we're paying for it.
Yeah. Those details I can find out tomorrow. That I'm not 100% sure of.
That's a... Like, can we work on this for a second, though? Because that means that's like... That's an important point, because then you want to look at your other players and see what percentages they're taking. If they're all at 100% except for the 67%, and it's a guarantee that they're not going to be an off-taker, then we want a slight amount of more caution. And I would go with more like an 85%. But like, if that's... You know, we're getting now down to the point where we want to also be a little bit more thoughtful. So... I'd be... I mean, I'm looking at... I'm wondering if the manager has any also thoughts on that, then?
I... Just based on my understanding, and of course, I trust Dave's recommendation, and I absolutely agree with the risk tolerance. I mean, really, this is what it comes to, is the board's risk tolerance on the matter. I think the way the contract is being prepared, that it's going to allow for this working group to be able to navigate these types of, what I'll call, nuances, because we've engaged the consultant to identify and explore these types of situations, how, you know, how impacted would the municipality be? I would be comfortable at 100%, but that's with some risk. But overall, minimal risk. I think 85% is a good place, based on what I'm hearing from all of you and understanding what our municipal partners... 85% investment on solar power purchase agreement.
And again, today, we're not signing anything. We are putting forth our more certain estimate than the previous range. So, you know, but if you were to come back to us and, you know, have something brand new that we hadn't factored in, we could change that. And we are a small enough participant that it's not going to really weigh, you know...
And that's what I mean by the new ones, is I think that a lot of these calculations have been, you know, explored with the experts. I did inquire about the contract today. It's not quite ready for review, but I have asked for, when it's ready, that we have a copy and then have our solicitor review it as well, because I think the detail in the contract is also going to determine, you know, if we want to reevaluate. But for this evening, to move forward and share with the working group, tomorrow, I think, is our deadline... Or is it tomorrow?
They'd like to hear the numbers tomorrow, and then they can be refined during the month of March.
There you are. Yep. And then, by then, we'll have the contract language.
Right, right.
And we'll have had our solicitor review it.
Yeah. Okay. So let's keep moving down the table here and get some other percentage opinions.
So Dave, can I ask another question that we didn't answer yet? Do you foresee the electricity use going down in the township over the next five years?
The only way I would see it going down is if we were offsetting it by building our own additional solar arrays, which we may not be incentivized to do if we're already into this agreement. So beyond that, really what we're talking about is what other energy reduction measures can we implement? A lot of those we have already implemented, but I think typically, as we grow, our energy consumption increases. But we'll try to manage it by offsetting that with whatever energy savings we can develop. So I don't see it going down significantly, no.
I mean, I'm really in favor of us going to 100%. I don't... Like I said, I don't see... I see, if anything, our electricity use might go up if we adopt any electric vehicles and change out our fleet in the future, which I would hope would be a long-term plan for the township. I don't... I don't see the risk in locking in a price. I actually think that that gives us some budget certainty, right? To know what our electricity costs are going to be for the long-term future. I think that helps with budget planning significantly. I'm... You know, this is not binding right now, but I'm also hopeful that the contract will include language. If we find ourselves in a situation with extra electricity, that there's enough partners in the pool that we hopefully should be able to do something with it. Maybe even if we have to sell at a discount, I mean, I think that would be fine. I think that it's really also more of a statement about this township and where we're meeting our climate goals, right? I think, you know, I'm not too concerned about the risks. I think that there are benefits that outweigh them.
Well, if you had... Yeah.
The last meeting, I was probably somewhere around 75. But on understanding kind of where our township has been, as kind of one of the first in the region to really come out with some bold progressive climate goals, I'd even be willing to go up to 100%.
Yeah. You still don't want my 85 to 100 range? You want a number?
No.
Sorry.
I mean, a number range it. Didn't they say they could change it? I mean, we could. I think it'd be helpful to get a little more narrow than that, but...
Yeah, I guess I'm... I'm okay. I'm okay with 100%.
Okay.
You're next in line.
I am next in line. So I under... One of the discussion points today, and what we talked about last time, is having it at a little under 100 allows for some more flexibility, you know, other options. If we were to put our own solar array, say, on this building, because we've done a project like that before, it still provides that option. If the contract wasn't 15 years, and I'll say it's 15 years at the time that it starts, so it's actually probably 17 years from now at full build-out. So we're making plans for several boards in the future. If it wasn't quite that long, it would be a little bit easier to commit, I think, to say, this is our green energy plan for the next nearly 20 years. So I think having it slightly... Well, I don't think that, you know, maybe our electricity needs would change that much. You know, maybe they will go up. I think it just provides future boards a little bit of flexibility while still, you know, making that commitment. I mean, it's 85%. It's still making a large commitment. We'd only have 15% that we would necessarily be relying on from traditional, the traditional grid. We'd have a contract for that, too, that would be negotiated through this working group. So it's, you know, there is still that other part of it. I mean, I'm not firmly opposed to moving up above 85, but that's my thought on it at the moment. So maybe, depending on what you say, maybe we'll compromise a little bit, or we'll just go to 100.
Sure. Well, we don't technically have any tiebreaking going on, because we have a majority already for 100% if we wanted to kind of move that through. I think that... I mean, I was here when we became the leaders on this kind of endeavor in setting those climate goals, and I certainly do stand behind them. I do find that we've put a lot of organizational effort into this with COG. And I think that they're really leading it now. I guess the school district financially is leading it, consultant-wise is leading it. But I don't really feel that us making kind of a deliberate decision based on the conditions of our own township is not following through with the promises that we made. So I think that being slightly more cautious, while certainly not being conservative, is where I'm more comfortable. And my preference would be to try to have board alignment around providing them with a range that would be a more narrow range, that would involve kind of each of us giving a little bit, and maybe coming to something like 90 to 95%, where we're not going up to 100, but we're not staying down at 85. I feel like, for me, with that very long commitment and our leadership in installing our own solar array, and then the additional uncertainty still in this project, I don't really feel like there's a need to necessarily cheerlead and say 100%, but maybe kind of just maybe be grounded and deliberate and be a little bit more cautious. So those are my thoughts on this. I don't think we have a motion on the table yet, so... I don't have my glasses, so... Well, it's one you make up in your head, I think, anyway. I'm going to say, I move that the Board of Supervisors approves 90% of total... Sorry, I've already lost it now. Of total electric consumption to allocate for the solar power purchase agreement.
For a second. A second. Okay. Any further discussion? And I'll just say, at the next discussion, likely we'll have the contracts. We'll have one more working group meeting worth of questions answered and brought back. So I think that'll help us as we sign the contract and identify the actual...
And did I say this was Patty who made that motion? Sorry, Rhonda. This is Patty.
I know. Sorry. I keep forgetting that, too. Any other discussion?
I think my last point will be that in us committing 100% of our electricity use today, or even 90%, that it's my best estimation that if we're using more energy, you have to remember that that percentage that will be in the solar purchase will always be going down, right? Like, if each year we're using more electricity, if we say we're going to pick this number, this 90% now, it will be less and less in the years ahead if we keep using more and more electricity. And that we'll have to purchase it. And we have to be okay with that, right? We're fixing an amount now, not like that we're going to use all of solar for the rest of time.
I think that that's an important point, but I think that what we had talked about before is that we could possibly do another solar purchase agreement. So for example, with COG only purchasing 75%, they also may... And like, COG has way more fleet than us and more employees and more facilities and more buildings, more assets, everything, more, more, and more. And they're really also... Code, in particular, is super advancing on the plug-in vehicles. Like, we kind of have to hold them back with a harness, because they are so excited about getting that. So I think that it's not wrong, what you're saying. I think that, you know, when you are groundbreaking like this, and it's such a long-term thing, you know, there are, right, there's those two types of errors, right? And like, when you're an early adopter, sometimes you're bearing the burden of the market for others that come behind you. And I think that that's good, but we're talking taxpayer dollars. So that's why I'm kind of getting on this very slightly more cautious, you know? It's not like I'm saying 20%, but it's just... It just gives us a little bit of wiggle room to work with, where we're able to off-take somebody's stuff, too, at a discount, instead of the ones that have to take the discount for our taxpayers. So I kind of like that negotiating position. But I don't disagree with what you're saying. Like, there's a... There's a lot of uncertainty going on.
And this has come before us again. So, yes. Anything else on this? Now, we have a motion. In a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no.
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay. Up next, we have a continued discussion on use of funds from PCCD, and then I will turn that over to the manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, Chief Patrick is unable to join us, and I'll refer to the narrative that's provided to you in the agenda and acknowledge that this is our third conversation on the matter. And so we appreciate your consideration. At the last meeting, regular meeting, on February 7th, the board had discussed, and it's my understanding that you had all agreed or accepted use of funds for purchase of the drone. And so this evening, we'd be looking for the board to confirm that with a approval, a motion to approve. And then, as we left that conversation, there had been discussion for consideration for one, possibly two, traffic signals to have the automated license plate readers. So this evening, the board certainly can give that some consideration. Alternatively, I'd like to share with you that PCCD had been contacted, and there is certainly an option for Ferguson Township to submit a request for an amendment to the application for alternative use of funds to be used for an alternative, for alternative purposes. At this time, staff has not been able to identify what we might consider use of funds, but it's still early. And we'd ask that if the board is not interested in the automated license plate readers, even at one or two traffic signals, that you give some consideration to giving staff time to consider how those alternative use of funds might be used and follow up with a conversation at a future time. And in the interim, be able to proceed with use of funds for purchase of the drone.
Thank you. Thanks for that update. Thanks for the options. And it does reflect our previous conversation. So thanks. Let's start with discussion to see where we end up with the motion. So we'll start on this end this time.
I'm still very strongly against any automatic plate readers. I don't feel the need for that level of surveillance in our township.
Would you be supportive, and this is what I'll ask everyone to input on, is purchase of the tethered drone and then looking into the alternative use of funds?
Yes, very much so.
Okay. Thank you.
We're doing a next in line thing.
Yes.
So, yeah, sorry. So I am in favor of the drone. Still on the fence with the automated license plate readers. I understand people's concerns. I also have, since the last time, a lot more questions about just how the data is going to be secured. Like, is the... Like, my understanding with the NCIC data, the FBI actually regulates how that is accessed. And it sounds like it's a pretty locked-up system. But my understanding is these license plate readers would be capturing the data of the license plate to make a model of the car, but is it getting any other personal information? Because my understanding is all those images are then captured on Amazon web servers. But are those... What kind of regulations does Flock Safety and Amazon have for securing that data? Is it under the same regulations as the NCIC data?
So it's supportive of the drones?
Yes.
And then supportive of looking into alternate use and not dedicating it to these... Okay.
Yes.
I am in agreement with Cory about the supportive of the drone and supportive of looking into alternate use of the funds, yeah.
Yes. I think that the drone for rescue, in particular, and fire, is really good and understanding where, like, you know, people are trapped or something like that, and want to encourage the use at the region and the tracking of that use when we're supporting the region, you know, if we have to, heaven forbid. And so to encourage then that to be adopted at the regional level. And I do support the use... The looking into alternative uses for the funds. I also agree that there is... Given all I know about our community, there's just no need to be doing that kind of a surveillance. But I also still would be supportive of giving that, like, to an interstate or turnpike kind of a community or something if they needed it. But I know we can't do that. So that's it. Thanks.
Thanks. I'm in agreement with all those who've spoken before me. So I think the motion we'll look for is to support acceptance of the funds to be used on the purchase of a tethered drone and asking staff to further research alternate uses for the funds.
This is Patty. So moved.
Laura, second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
I just want to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors for the ongoing lengthening of discussion and consideration. Very appreciated. We'll proceed as accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for facilitating all that discussion, too. Okay, all right. We'll move on to the consent agenda with a number of items, including a treasurer's report for acceptance.
So moved.
This is Patty, I'll second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to new business, a proclamation of the Township of Ferguson, Center County, Pennsylvania, to officially recognize Black History Month of 2023. And providing the agenda is the proclamation, and at this time, I'd like to introduce Leslie Lang, if you'd like to come up to the podium, and I'd invite you to introduce any guests and make any comments you'd care to share, and read the proclamation if you would like to as well.
That'll be good. I don't have a copy of it yet. But yes, good afternoon, good evening, everybody. My name is Leslie Lang. I've been a Ferguson Township resident for 16 years. I'm first generation. My family is from Jamaica, West Indies. That means that I've been the first one born in my family in the United States. I have had the pleasure of serving as the Director for Adult Learner Programs in Student Affairs at Penn State. I have been the past President for the Forum on Black Affairs. I'm currently serving as the Educational Co-Chair for the State College NAACP. And most recently, I'm the proud recipient of the Humanitarian Service Award for 2023. Volunteerism, civic engagement, and service is a way of life for me and my daughter. It gives me great pleasure this evening to be with the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors, and to acknowledge the contributions and accomplishments of African-Americans in our community with an official proclamation from Ferguson for Black History Month. African-American history is our collective history. The formal acknowledgements serve to unite our aspirations and our pursuits of justice and equality for our community. Our everyday practices, our beliefs, and our social interactions affirm this celebration as a call to action to reform our hierarchies, our social structures, and that tend to form barriers to our unity as a nation. In solidarity, I ask us to aspire to understand one another and the roles that we play in liberation for all. Let us mitigate oppression through our own intentional choices, positive actions, and together create a more inclusive community where everyone is seen, celebrated, and feel that they belong. With me tonight, I have brought a few amazing individuals who are also Center County residents and call Ferguson our home, and we have had an impact in our community and on our campus for many years. Shannon Holliday is in our audience, and she is the First African-American Judge of Elections for the 49th Precinct and for Ferguson Planning Commission. Gary Abdullah, an elder at Unity Church of Jesus Christ and founding member of the MLK Plaza Committee. Chalovia Zulu, our first African-American woman to serve the Borough of State College as the Director for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Grace Hampton, the first African-American woman who was appointed to the university as Vice Provost for Penn State. And Terry Watson. He also works on campus with me. He is also the founder of Strategies for Justice, and he is also my Educational Co-Chair for the State College NAACP, and two of which would also like to join me and make comments this evening.
Hi. So, just like my fellow co-chair, Leslie, I'm happy to be here. This is actually my first time in this building. I've worked with Ferguson on many different projects, but actually never walked into this building, so I just want to say how happy I am to be here. I just want to make a quick, a very quick statement about Black History Month, and as it pertains to what we celebrate. So, Black History is more than acknowledging the Black American contribution in this country. It's a time to recognize Black excellence and perseverance. It is a time to observe and reflect on where we gather strength and wisdom, how we sustain our Black identity, and how we face and overcome opposition when presented. It is also a time to remember our ancestors, recognize our elders, and celebrate those amongst us in their being which instill pride, dignity, and a greater sense of patriotism. Black History Month reminds us that our history is your history, that our history is the country's foundation on which its freedoms currently stand. We should do everything in our power to preserve this history and protest any movement threatening to erase or silence what is so crucial in our patriotic tenet. As Leslie mentioned, this township, as well as our fellow surrounding townships, have their own Black history to celebrate. We have celebrated with you all many first elected, first elected positions of African-Americans serving in these positions. So I applaud these milestones with you this Black History Month, and I also will implore that these milestones be the starting point and not the endpoint. So we should do all that is necessary to continue to remember, recognize, and celebrate our history, our pride, and our patriotic dignity together.
Like Terry, this is also my first time in this building. I've been a resident of Ferguson Township for about five years now, and the first Black DEIB Director for the Borough of State College. My story is a little bit different. I was actually born in Zambia, a small country in Africa, and a lot of the history that I learned was what I was taught, and then also African history. I didn't learn Black history until I, you know, became a college student, until I further dived into that with the new job that I have, and I want to empower all of us to notice that Black history is not just about a month, it is our history. It is the history of this country, how this country was built, and how we are able to be the nation that we are. So if we could all work together to continue to highlight this history in everything that we do, then we can ask and only make a better world. Thank you.
Absolutely. We think about notables all the time, and we said first. We can also go back just briefly to history to say that Kay Leroy Ervis was the first African-American Speaker of the State House of Representatives in the United States, and that was after being elected to the Pennsylvania House in 1958. And of course, State College has been on the map, because Dr. Martin Luther King came and visited Penn State in 1965, and former President Barack Obama visited Penn State when he was running for his presidency in 2008. So we thank you all for acknowledging foremost the purpose of Black History Month, and making the proclamation for all Americans to be aware of the struggle that continues for freedom and equal opportunity for Black Americans, and to specifically call attention to many achievements that Black Americans have in every field, from the sciences, literature, arts, politics, religion, and commerce. And so we thank you for recognizing and celebrating Black history in Ferguson Township. It's, thank you. It's customary now that I think your chair or your manager read and give us the proclamation and sign it.
I was going to say time check, but it's up to you, Madam Chair, if you would like to proceed.
Oh, yeah, would you care? Just sign? Yes. I'm sorry. Would you care to read the proclamation? You're absolutely invited to do so, and then we can.
Yes, usually it's you reading it to us, but I can read it if you prefer.
Whichever you prefer. I'm leaving it up to you.
Okay. We are very happy and very excited, so thank you, Lisa, for arranging for the proclamation. I will now read the proclamation as issued by Ferguson Township, Center County. Whereas Ferguson Township is committed to the celebration of diversity and fostering an inclusive and welcoming community for all its citizens. And whereas, Black History Month is celebrated each year to recognize the struggle and gross injustices faced by African-Americans throughout history, and to honor their achievements to the economic, cultural, spiritual, scientific, legal, and political contributions to this country. And whereas, the celebration of Black History Month started in 1926 from the work of Carter G. Woodson, a noted African-American historian, scholar, educator, and publisher. And whereas, in 1976, President Gerald Ford officially recognized Black History Month, and every president of the United States since has continued to designate the month of February to honor and recognize the importance of this month-long celebration. And whereas, each year, there is an endorsed theme for Black History Month, the theme for 2023 is Black Resistance. This explores how African-Americans have resisted historic, ongoing oppression in all its forms, especially racial terrorism of lynching, racial programs, and police killings since the nation's earliest days. And whereas, it is important that we recognize the dedication, tenacity, and resilience exhibited by Black Americans to shape the Ferguson Township community for the better. Now, therefore, the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors does hereby designate February 2023 as Black History Month, and we call upon all public officials, educators, and residents of our township to observe this month with the appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities, and recognize the tremendous contributions that Black and African-Americans to our community. This is proclaimed the 21st day of February 2023. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll first take a motion to adopt the proclamation.
Yes, I move that the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors adopt the proclamation recognizing February as Black History Month.
I'll second. Ms. Laura?
Okay. And I'll just share my many, many thanks for all of you for coming tonight, for speaking, sharing your experiences. It's greatly appreciated, and please come back, those of you who shared your first time in the building. We really appreciate your presence here tonight, and thank you again. Any other comments? Okay. If a motion is second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Thank you very much. Thank you again. And I believe we're gonna take a quick recess to take a picture. Okay. All right. Fabulous. Quick recess. Thank you.
Is it just a picture?
Is it just a picture?
[inaudible]
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 In August 2021, the Township engaged consultant HRG to conduct an update to the RPOS plan led by Tracy Strickland. An addendum to that project included the master plan, the master planning process for Greenbrier Saybrook Park. Since that time, HRG engaged citizens via multiple public input events, including the Municipal Mixer held at the park in August of 2022. Additional input was received from the Parks and Recreation Committee to deliver a draft master plan to the Board of Supervisors. Attached to this agenda is a copy of the Greenbrier Saybrook Park Draft Master Plan. Ms. Strickland will present this plan and answer any questions pertaining to the plan. The Board is asked to authorize advertisement of a public hearing to consider approval of the Greenbrier Saybrook Park Master Plan by resolution at the March 7th regular meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Strickland.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me back again this evening to present the plan. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. I'm going to share my screen. And can everyone see the landing slide here on my screen for this evening?
Yes.
Good. All right. We'll keep it brief. Thank you again for having me back. I was here two weeks ago. So what I'd like to do to launch this is just re-cover a few slides on our public input process that I shared with all of you two weeks ago, a quick overview on parks assessments for both Fairbrook Park and Greenbrier Saybrook Park, kind of revisit some key findings and recommendations just specific to parks facilities, and then we'll talk about the master site plans. I do plan to pause between Greenbrier Saybrook Park so that you can do any important procedures before I present Fairbrook Park.
Thank you.
Just a quick review of the public input process that we did during the entire Recreation Parks and Open Space Plan update. Our public input process had several components to it. We attended some in-person events, including the Winter Market in December of 21. We conducted a digital citizen survey that ran through October of 2022. We held a virtual community meeting in January of 2022. We attended the Municipal Mixer at Greenbrier Saybrook Park back in August of this past year, and at the same time, we did conduct a series of stakeholder and sports organization interviews. And here on screen, you can see again some of the interactive activities that we take with us to these events for our engagement stations. From the citizen survey, really quickly, we did get 113 responses to that online survey, and the top trends that we heard related to the township facilities to keep and expand included trails, playground equipment, outdoor winter facilities, although they weren't necessarily always defined, and pickleball courts. Priorities for the next 10 years for facilities included maintaining the parks that you already have, developing more trail, greenway, and bike connections between destinations, park destinations, schools, neighborhoods, and things like that, but also conserving the open space that you do have and rehabilitating the older parks in the township. Similarly, when we did a total of 15 stakeholder and sports organization interviews, we heard similar sorts of things as well as sports-specific items, including renovating existing fields, providing onsite storage for some equipment, even small things like adding water bottle filling stations to park facilities, maybe during a fountain upgrade or something like that. And then also that the township parks themselves can have some more unique features and offerings within them that could make them attractive for visitors to come and see. That balance between active and passive recreation is still desirable, and that it's also okay if some parks have a little more active recreation or some parks have a little more passive recreation. That's acceptable, too. And then I just wanted to put a reminder there that what we heard from those interviews was that the best-served age groups were considered to be children and seniors, but the least-served age groups seemed to be teens and young adults. Here we were at the Municipal Mixer at Greenbrier Saybrook Park. We had a great turnout. It was a great day for the event. These were some of the activities that we took to our engagement station. We had miniature surveys that people could fill out while they were waiting to place their green dots and red dots on the image boards where we had examples of different types of active recreation or passive recreation options that might or might not be suitable for this particular park or any park in the township. And then we even created some word art based on the most frequent comments that we heard in the surveys, and while as tallying up the dots, green dots were good, red dots were eh, not so good. So as you can see, like in this image on active recreation number eight, nobody wanted a park just completely devoted to bocce, for example. But we saw a lot of positive input about outdoor exercise stations, as well as a lot of green dots for passive recreation to just relax and enjoy the park in a natural setting. Our team also conducted boots-on-the-ground onsite assessments of each of the 12 parks owned by the township excluding Songbird Sanctuary and the Thomas Ferguson property. But we did go to the others, and we did look at Fairbrook Park, and we did look at Greenbrier Saybrook Park. What we did is we took photographs. We also mapped the facilities at each of those parks. And then we began an assessment chart where we identified the amenities here, and then we put an assessment condition, whether it was in good shape, fair shape, poor shape, the ages served, whether or not they had ADA access leading to them, any other observations and recommendations. And then we applied a priority code which matches the funding priority matrix in the finance chapter of the report, so that it helps make some decisions down the line if certain construction needs to take place and things like that. The good news is the general things that we saw by and large in all of the parks really just had to do with internal accessibility, so that the interior park amenities could connect to each other through accessible routes. We did not find, at least at the time of the assessment, any red flag safety issues. So kudos on doing a great job with ongoing maintenance. Last two slides, just quickly summarizing. The key findings from the public input were that we reached over 300 voices across those different outreach methods, and the dominant themes by and large were very consistent. Residents wanted to see more paved walking and bicycle paths in the parks and to the parks. They would like to see upgrades to existing playgrounds where appropriate, including adding additional ADA play equipment. They would like more opportunities for passive recreation and nature-based activities in the parks, which can also include and dovetail efforts for sustainable landscape practices, green infrastructure BMPs, using park landscape and other features as outdoor educational tools in particular. They also did indicate across the board that they would like to see expanded recreation opportunities for families, for teens, and for people with disabilities. For active recreation, the two top contenders that we saw consistently were the request for pickleball facilities as well as those outdoor exercise stations. And then on the smaller side of things, again, that water bottle filling station request was pretty consistent, as well as the additional bike repair stations in some parks and along some trail. So we got all that input, and then we digest it and turn it back around and make some key recommendations. Tonight, I'm going to focus just on the facilities, the recommendations for facilities, and then how they translate to the park master plans. So, here we go. For facilities, add more paved walking and biking paths where possible to better connect the schools and destinations and parts and pieces of the community together. That also includes installing more accessible paths and site furnishings inside the parks themselves. And again, in the lower right corner here, this is a great example, what you're already doing at Tom Tudak Park, where you've got the primary walking trail, a nice accessible path connecting the trail to the pavilion just off to the right. In the image here is actually a drinking fountain. And then in the future, one day, you can maybe pick up the trash can and move it to either one of those corners so that the trash receptacle is also completely ADA accessible. Also, upgrade playground equipment over time. As those play pieces age, it's okay to replace them with newer things, obviously, but also to consider including more ADA and adaptive play pieces. Now, sometimes that can be a big piece that has those ADA components in it. Sometimes it can be a standalone ADA piece, if appropriate. Include more passive recreation and nature-oriented elements, like I said, with sustainable landscape practices, perfectly fine to combine those two. And then also plan for the aging population by adding more seating, low-impact activities, and accessible restrooms. The restrooms can be temporary, but it's helpful if they are accessible. Consistent feedback we heard, which is a great recommendation to put it back out there, is to install outdoor exercise stations where appropriate, add more pickleball courts where appropriate, and we also heard requests for a ball return wall in some locations. And then, as mentioned before, look for ways to diversify the amenities in those parks so that each one might be able to take on a unique flavor or aspect that it can be known for to attract more visitors to it. So that's a lot of words. Thank you for letting me run through that from two weeks ago. But what do the words mean when we start talking about an actual park master plan? So, right now, if we look at the proposed master plan for Greenbrier Saybrook Park, I can zoom in if anyone wants me to. On the left, we've got the key elements, again, kind of a quick list of the things that we're proposing to go into this park or to expand upon or improve in this park. To the right of the sheet is the actual master site plan as currently proposed. In the lower right, and I zoomed in, exact copy of that image is a nature play slash discovery zone type space. So with that, what I'm going to do is start on the right-hand side at the parking lot. The parking lot itself is fine. We had no big issues there. The thing that we observed there was that the current accessible parking spaces, the paint faded, and technically, the sign is a little low. So we would just make the recommendation, sorry if the text is blurry, I added some extra labels if needed, but we would make the recommendation here to simply update the striping for the ADA parking spaces and include new signage at the appropriate height. The big thing that we heard from all the input we got at the Municipal Mixer was that the folks who use the park love the trail, but the issue with the trail is that it's not paved. And also that it doesn't have a complete interior loop. You could do a loop around the basketball court, the pavilion, and the tot lot, but if you come across to the western side of the park, that's it. You have to turn around and retrace your steps. So the big thing that we're showing on this particular plan in light gray where my hand is tracing right now, that's the existing trail system, perfectly fine alignment where it is right now, with the exception of one piece we'll talk about in a second. That will remain, but we're proposing it to be paved. Then we're proposing, on the west side of the park, a short section of additional paved trail that will allow, first of all, the entire park to have a complete interior loop trail, but also the western side could have an even smaller loop if someone chooses to use that. Coming back to the east side of the park plan, we've added several features around the existing features to remain. So the square right here where my hand is hovering is the existing pavilion, which is in good shape and is accessible. That will remain. We'll talk about the tot lot here in just a moment. The basketball court will remain. It's in good shape. Just in a couple years, the surface probably needs to be repainted, re-striped. What we heard from everyone was about pickleball, additional trail sections, and additional activities. So what we are showing on the plan near the basketball court are proposed pickleball courts with accessible pathways connecting to them and a bocce court in this location. And while we were investigating the base maps, it was pointed out that the existing trail that's out there now technically crosses over this red dashed property boundary line, which is not township property. So as part of the future plan, we're suggesting that this section of trail come up and be realigned and redone to stay on township property. That's what you're seeing here at this corner. And then everything else connects all the proposed and existing amenities together and can wrap back around to the tot lot, to the pavilion, and to the parking lot. The tot lot is old. I'll be honest, the equipment is old, so we do suggest it be replaced.
Tracy?
Yes, go ahead.
You know what I answer, I feel as though...
I'm sorry?
Feel as though...
Is that a question?
No, Tracy, if you could just hold on for a minute.
Okay.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, James.
Okay, can I speak now?
Yeah.
Yes, do you have a question, sir?
Tracy, if you could just hold on for a second, this isn't the time for public comment. We're receiving a presentation, so our Zoom administrator is handling...
Okay.
Okay.
This right now, okay. Okay, thank you very much for your patience, Tracy. Please continue.
I'm almost done. Do you want me to wait longer?
No, thank you.
Okay. We were going to suggest that as the equipment in the tot lot reaches its peak age, it be replaced and be replaced with tot-aged equipment, but consider including ADA equipment there as well. And then near that area where my hand is hovering over the nature play zone and this yellow area right here, right now, it's mown lawn, and we're suggesting that a connection to or maybe even its own nature play space based on natural materials, timber, balance beams, stepping logs, and things like that that could interact with the slope nearby and expand the play experience in this particular area. Now, when we start adding new pavement and new play spaces, we start increasing the area of impervious surface. So one thing that we would like to do, based on recommendations and public input, is examine areas in this part of the park where we could take advantage of underutilized lawn space and existing topography and convert that mown lawn into more sustainable landscapes that can also double as green infrastructure. So for example, on the slope on the outer edge of the trail here, we would suggest expanding the use of the low-mow zone mix that's been working in some of the other parks. And then along the edges on the outside of the trails, where the drainage pattern is already doing this and creating a swale, instead of having a bemo lawn, converting that to vegetated bio swales that feed into rain gardens on either side. Particularly over here where this is a larger rain garden, there's actually a culvert right here under the trail that feeds into an existing stormwater management basin. So this would allow a lot of pollutant reduction and sediment reduction to happen and take place before it reaches that basin. Also, along the trail, you see these blue dots. We're suggesting opportunities for those outdoor exercise stations, and these little symbols that are around the trail system here represent updated site furnishings with paved bumpouts for ADA companion seating. When we go through the woods and head over to the west side of the park, we have another area right now that's currently open lawn, and we are suggesting introducing a new youth playground with ADA equipment and safety surfacing for children ages five to 12 years old. And that accompanying that playground is an opportunity to introduce a sensory garden, native pollinator meadows, or some kind of outdoor classroom space to go with it. And again, by adding our little trail sections here, we can connect to the existing pavilion on this side of the park, and maybe that doubles as an outdoor classroom. And then as we discussed earlier, by adding this additional piece of paved trail, we create an entire loop on this side of the park and could add additional native flowering trees for spring and summer and fall interest, additional area of mown turf converted to native pollinator meadow, and then the pockets of pink are small native planting areas that can supplement the memorial garden here, supplement the park sign here, and supplement the learning garden here. It is anticipated that all of the existing woodlands that are out there now would remain and be untouched by this project. So that is, in a nutshell, where we're at with the pre-final master site plan for Greenbrier Saybrook Park. I'm happy to take questions at this time.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I want to really apologize for the interruption in the middle of that, and thank you for your professionalism and patience while we handled that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And again, I'm sorry for that. Yeah, so questions, comments? We'll start with that before we move into a motion. So whoever wants to start?
I guess I, my only question or comment is really about the pickleball courts. Because I just seem to remember what patent township went through.
We're all nervous.
Yeah, exactly.
I was going to ask about it, too. She seemed to indicate that there were actually people asking for it, but I know it can actually divide a neighborhood.
Exactly.
Some are asking for it, some are asking for not.
Right, right. And, you know, I live just near suburban park, and I can hear it from where I live.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, yeah, and it doesn't, it doesn't disturb me at all. I actually, but it, but it is.
It really carries.
It carries.
Wow.
It carries. So I'm really, the pickleball thing is an interesting one.
And that's a fair point, and we had tested out a couple locations for it. We initially had it rotated and lined up exactly with the basketball court, and Bill Keo and others from CRPR suggested rotating it the way we have it shown now, which actually then gave us more room to suggest new plantings of native vegetation to help mitigate the noise, and also allowed the pickleball court to shift further into the middle of the, at least of this part of the park, because, yeah, this is a lot of residential homeownership around here that, again, might not want to hear that. That was one thing we did with that concern in mind.
Thank you. Laura?
Thank you so much. Really nicely done, again, with the engagement and the document. I'm not as familiar with this park as I am Fairbrook, so I'm going to have a few more comments on that plan. My question about this one does relate to the pickleball and then like, in the future, these plans and how they'll be utilized. I just wonder if we could possibly make a notation on the pickleball court that before this is installed, there would be future engagement of adjacent property owners. Because, you know, I am thinking a lot now about not being here in the future because this is my last year, in case you haven't heard, I'm counting down 20 more, 20 more meetings. So I'm thinking a lot about, you know, just things that we talk about, and then in the future, maybe the same people aren't there, and then I'm talking about it, and then everybody's like, oh, well, they totally wanted that to be put in there because they all voted. So, you know, it's maybe not that I want it taken out, per se, but that I would say, could we make a notation of further follow-up on that particular amenity? And I'll say something similar in the Fairbrook as well.
I think it's a great suggestion, yeah.
Yeah.
Not that you all don't always do outreach, but like, this is about board intent, being super clear, like, we're acknowledging that there's some wobbliness with this suggestion.
And this one is very close to the home, so I think...
Fairbrooke's even closer.
Yeah.
That would be my only caution or comment in terms of what I see as potential hiccups. Otherwise, really, it's just, I think it's really well done. Again, I'm not super familiar with this landscape, but I love the idea of the loop closing, you know, really reflecting the residents' needs here, so, thanks.
I heard a lot of the same at the mixer, the need for the finished pads.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, very good. Okay, other comments on the plan, or questions?
I'm a little more familiar with this park. One of, and one of my concerns is the new play area that's being proposed to the west. You know, one of the things that's unique about this park is that it is divided, you know, two-thirds, one-thirds, and in the summertime, those trees are very full. There aren't great sightlines from the main part of the park over to the other side. I get a little concerned about having that playground tucked back in the trees in terms of people being able to have eyes on that playground, right? You know, I get, I remember coming to this park for the first time and getting nervous when my young one went over to that side because I couldn't see them anymore. So that's just caution, right? I think it's good to close the loop, but that, I appreciate having a little bicycle path or something that people can ride around. That seems great. I just don't know if that's the best, you know, tucked up against a house and those trees, I just don't know if that's the best location for another playground.
I wonder if we can add another note to the plan that, and we can even put a symbol in this location to maintain sightlines through the trees to that playground if it's installed in that location in the future.
And I think just opening up the sightlines in the park in general would be nice. I don't want to, I don't want to cut down, I don't want to cut down a bunch of trees, but at the same time, it's unusual, right? It's unusual to have a park where two-thirds of it are very open and you can see everything, and then you go through this little tiny path, and then there's a whole other part of the park that you can't really visually see.
I didn't even know it was there when I was there the one time.
Right. Was there any discussion of just having that as a pavilion area, picnicking area?
Yes, we did talk about that, and the other possibility is that the youth playground could potentially fit in the zone where we have nature play. And that way, the tot lot and the youth play zone speak to one another and are in this more open space close to the parking, close to the pavilion on this side, and that this zone could become a more passive play space.
I like that, but I really was, my really only comment was going to be how great the nature play area is.
Yeah, I like it, too.
The school district has incorporated at least one of those, and it's, you know, it's so different, and if you've traveled to other parks in other areas, you know how different play spaces can be, and we have a lot of the same. So I really would not want to lose what you've designed here, but I think, I think that is a really good point that's been raised about the sightline, and that is just going to be a point of aggravation and not enjoyment, I think, for, you know, it could be, I can, I can see that, but I might be over...
No, I mean, you can imagine having multiple kids, right? One wants to play at the tot lot, another one wants to go play at the bigger kid playground, and you can't, there's no place you can stand where you can see them both, so.
If, I have a question about that. If, so the green clump there is all proposed, again, not to kind of get into fiddling around with your master plan, but if that clump wasn't proposed there, is there a terrain reason why you would not have sightline there? Or is it just, if you would just like, like you were saying, like, make a, it really is playground to playground that you want your sightline, pretty much.
Yeah.
So like, if you...
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, like if, yeah, I'm sorry, like, if maybe it does just, is just a matter of like, having a notation on here that just says, maintain sightline to other playground. You know, you wouldn't have to move the clump around, right? That's the canopy, but then underneath the canopy, what your intent is, is to maintain the internal integration between the two playgrounds.
Yeah, I'm also concerned about the proposed grove is the existing, the existing green line that divides the park into two.
That's what I was going to ask. I'm not really sure how much of that is existing and how much of that is proposed.
This is all considered existing, but admittedly, it's very stylized for the purpose of the master plan, and so maybe at some point, a supplemental detailed survey of exactly how many trees are there, how big they are. And then we did notice in both parks, in many of the woodland edge conditions, a higher prevalence of invasive shrub species. So as part of the RPOS plan update in the recommendations, we have addressed or at least acknowledged that and suggested that an invasive species management plan, you know, get defined and get implemented. That may also help address that sightline issue where stuff starts to grow up above where the eyes can see things.
I think the issue is it's not just the trees there, but there is undergrowth there as well, right?
There is undergrowth there, yes.
It's very...
Correct.
So I think I'm looking at the wrong place, because what I'm reading, and my eyes are terrible, it keeps saying, propose, propose, propose.
Oh, yeah, there's another one up here. It might just be too similar, and we need to change the color of the symbol. There's also this existing tree canopy to remain with that... with that texture, and that's what that is. And then the proposed is more for individual tree symbols, where we might actually need a little more screening or privacy on behalf of the residents.
Okay. So like, where it says proposed native shade trees, it doesn't mean you're gonna take out the, we are taking out the existing trees and proposing new trees?
Correct. The only area where you would see that potentially happen is right here where the very old for shoe pits are. There are some very old trees there that may or may not survive transplanting if this portion of the park were developed. So we would suggest, if they had to come down, then they would be replaced with new plantings on either side.
So maybe we could remove where it says proposed native shade trees, if we don't wanna add to that cover in that line.
You can, it, over here.
I'm looking at the, with the arrow that's pointing, I don't know how to direct you to work.
Oh, right here. Oh, yes, you're right. Oh, my goodness, how silly. That should not be there. You're right. Fix label. I'm taking notes.
So.
Yeah, that should not say that. That should be existing.
Okay, and, okay, that clears that up. And then we could, I think that makes sense to add that note there.
Mm-hmm.
Maintain or create line of sight.
Yep.
To existing playgrounds?
Right, from main park area to playground area.
Mm-hmm.
While we're talking about this and the understory on both the master plans, I'm gonna ask for the same thing. Like, it says existing, like, preserve existing trees, and definitely agree with that. But can we add a note, because like, this is kind of part of the reasons why we embarked on the Fairbrook one, is the invasive species. But like, now the master plan, like, again, Martian anthropologist three years from now wouldn't know that that was one of the drivers. So could we put on both of them, this we're talking about now, like, maintain existing tree grove, but remove invasive understory? Because I think that, again, not familiar with this park, but if the invasive understory is removed, you probably don't have to touch the trees at all, because they're just a bunch of trunks. So, you can see everything.
Writing that down.
Thank you so much.
To work.
Okay, other comments? I guess this, this would be a comment I would have, or I will share on the Fairbrook one, too. If we look at all the proposed elements and then the budget breakdown, it's an expensive endeavor, so I guess I just wanna kind of note that it's a guideline, it's an outline of the ideal of what we could have here. So.
Yes.
You know, if, if adopted, this is, it gives this board, future boards, the direction, yeah, of where to go. So it's not as if the board is agreeing to undertake the expense outlined in the master plan. As approved by the boards, elements of it can be implemented and adopted. So just to say that. And then, I guess, is there, is there a better way? There's, proposed is how everything is listed, and I think that's fine. In my mind, that says optional, this is an optional element, this is an optional element.
Right.
When the Parks Committee receives that, or staff, does it read as if this is a necessary element, this is, you know, priority? Is there a better way to designate what is prioritized in implementation, or leave it all as proposed? I'm not uncomfortable with that. I'm just wondering if, at this stage of adopting the master plan, is it better to identify proposed, priority one, optional, anything like that? So, that's a question. I'm not uncomfortable with this, because I interpret the language one way. But like you're saying, I don't know how other boards, park committee, staff would interpret that. So I'd look for feedback maybe from staff, too.
Generally, that's something that staff would kind of navigate, you know, in terms of if we're doing a project where there's some mobility improvements, perhaps along, where is this, this is Greenbrier, so perhaps along Science Park Road that might intersect nicely. It might be a discussion that staff would have to identify, okay, well, let's take a look at Greenbrier-Sabreke and see what's on the master plan. So it serves as a guidance. It helps identify that if we are going to invest, invest funds, and we're going to do construction or improvements to a park, we look at the master plan and we look to see what would, what we might be able to do that might sync up nicely with another project that's nearby, if it's, you know, mobility improvements, or if we're looking, you know, and we're hearing a lot from neighborhood residents that they would like to see increased playground equipment replacement, or increased playground, which at this particular park, we hear from Parks Committee member frequently, that they're looking to see upgraded park playground equipment installed. And so this ends up really just serving as a guide. So if we do replace playground equipment, equipment here, we can integrate into that installation, the bigger vision for this park, understanding that there are different phases being proposed. And again, it's all dependent, too, on characteristics, and sometimes they change, whether it be available funds that we have access to, or it might be neighborhood demographics change, and we see that regularly. In fact, this park, I think 10, 15 years ago, it was described to me at one point by the former manager that this was more of a, this was a neighborhood with less, less families with children. And whether or not that's true, I don't know. I didn't really go back and look at demographics 10, 20 years ago. But today, that's certainly not the case. Today, we see a lot more families with children, which certainly, I think, suggests why we're hearing from residents that attend that park, they'd like to see more increased playground equipment options. And so, again, that could change in 10, 15 years, and we would reevaluate. So it's, again, it's a, it's a tool to serve as a guide for park improvements, and things change over time.
Thanks. That's what I wanted to hear, is that that's, you know, the general understanding of a proposed element. But you brought up my, one other point I was gonna make is, you know, I'm supportive of these elements. Yes, the pickleball is a, one, you know, that could use more discussion. But it does have unique elements that will draw new visitors, and so it would become a destination for people to come from outside the neighborhood. So I guess I would consider the weight on the parking availability, street parking there. I know you can park on the street there, I think. Yeah, you can. So this would, this would attract more visitors, because you're offering things that are unique over here. So just something else to consider as, as it's implemented.
And that was something discussed, too, when we, when staff reviewed it with Tracy. We, and perhaps it was with Fairbrook, or maybe even Greenbrier-Sabreke Park, that we could identify that as a recreation, or an optional recreational amenity, which just even, again, just suggests that there's more evaluation, there's an emphasis placed on the evaluation, that this is an optional amenity, as heard from residents throughout the public engagement process. But again, optional, just suggesting that we might wanna reevaluate that as we're constructing phases of the park improvement plan.
That makes sense. So to label something like pickleball as.
An optional amenity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then it would necessarily get more conversation. Yeah.
I do agree completely with that. I am hearing the conversation about it drawing more individuals into the park. And definitely, the pickleball courts in each of the master plans really drew a lot of concern for me, but I didn't want to overreact. But now that I'm thinking of that aspect of it as well, both of those parks, it's like, it's a neighborhood park. It's not where you're trying to, it's not Burnell Road Park, it's not Whitehall Road Regional Park, it's not Oak Hall. It's a neighborhood park. And with the Fairbrook, I'll have maybe some different discussion, but like, with this, the only reason I'm even kind of like saying I wanna even leave it in at all, frankly, honestly, is because, as I understood it, a lot of residents did also ask for it. But like, had that fact or not been part of this discussion, I would be recommending that we actually remove it, because it is a neighborhood park. And I think that this is really just a reflection of our continued struggle with providing the region's park amenities, but having no access to data other than what we generate, and no ability to kind of direct what's cited in regional parks. No ability to talk to college township, or to burn, or to Patton about a cohesive plan to develop amenities like this in appropriate parks. So we have something like 50 parks that are municipally outfitted, and not all of them are suited to these kinds of amenities.
Right.
So if others were supportive for both this and the Fairbrook, I would actually be fine with removing them, because I think even putting them in with all the cautions and the additional language is going to have an interest group knocking at our door very regularly, trying to have that particular amenity prioritized. And I am fine with people coming and having their voice heard, but if we don't, at the outset, really think it's appropriate for a facility type like this, we are actually putting ourselves into conflict with our own residents. So, it's kind of a lie, but that is sort of the one thing that makes me nervous about this master plan. And Lisa, I appreciate you bringing up the phasing question, because it had not dawned on me that, unlike other master plans like Cecil Irvin, where we have a scripted phasing rollout, that we don't always necessarily stick to to the nth degree. It is a guiding light for us. And so that, a large amount of potential investment, how do you prioritize that? It's a good question. When, last year, some of this was beginning, or maybe the year before that, one thing I was advocating for, that I'd like to see move forward, is a cohesive effort between the board and the Parks Committee, before we get to the CIP time, to review the master plans and the previous year's CIP, to try to kind of like, because we do a lot with our investment in parks, but we don't spend a lot of time as a board and staff interacting on it. So.
Yeah.
For me, the solution to the lack of the prioritization in the master plan would be offset by another process. Because I think that when we go into CIP, and we're looking at all of the things, the menu of things that we're gonna invest in, we would need more discussion.
I think that's a good idea. Yeah.
That's it.
I like, I do like that idea. Yeah, I was just looking at Fairbrook, because in my, in my mind, I was picturing that the Fairbrook pickleball court was farther away from the homes. I think it is a little closer, but it's closer to a few homes, whereas I think Sabreke is more surrounded by homes. I mean, I'm also comfortable leaving it out, especially, I guess, especially the Fairbrook one, I'm sorry, the Sabreke one, and then talking about Fairbrook when we get to that. But, but I had not heard either that there was that kind of demand from those neighbors for that. So, so we have a pickleball court at Suburban, and we have tennis courts at Two Deck.
Years, blocks away.
So, I don't, we already have.
Some.
One facility, so.
I'd rather, I think expanding at Two Deck makes a lot more sense, too, with that big grassy field down there. And also with Fairbrook, not, again, not to get into Fairbrook, but people driving way out there is not climate change friendly.
Yeah.
To achieve that, and, so.
When I was thinking of adding pickleball courts in the township, I really was envisioning Two Deck, because that is so open. We already have tennis there. It's, it just sees that kind of traffic, and isn't right up against a neighborhood like these two parks are. So.
Two, Two Deck is like our own little mini regional park, right?
Yes, just like Burnell.
Everybody comes from around our, and surrounding townships to go to that park.
Yep.
These other ones, I feel, especially Sabreke, I'm like, that's a neighborhood park.
Right.
Right.
And having played ball in the field near the pickleball courts, the acoustics there are not great, right? You can, you can hear what's going on in the backyards of those houses, so I can only imagine what they can hear going on in the park. So I would be very concerned about, I mean, even if we left it in, and then when we consulted those neighbors, all those neighbors would probably be like, no way, I don't want pickleball court there.
That's what I think. That's what I'm concerned about, so.
That's what I think, even if.
Yeah.
Can we?
If, sorry, if the board is interested in suggesting a removal of what's being presented this evening, I would just ask that you, that you take a motion and vote on a removal of an amenity proposed in the plan.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
This is Patty?
I move that we remove the pickleball court from the Greenbrier-Sabreke master plan.
This is Corey, I second.
Okay, any other discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Thanks for that well thought out discussion. I appreciate that. And I also want to just kind of keep somewhere on the radar, looking into, I don't know where the Two Deck Park master plan is, but I know there's always something going on over there. So kind of keeping that as a thought, moving forward to, to investigate that further, because I think, there is a, there is a need and a desire for these fields, and we're just trying to find the right spot. So, okay, anything else on Greenbrier-Sabreke? Okay, so we've made that motion. So if we accept this motion, we don't have to change anything else within that. Okay, so if there's no other discussion or questions on this park, we'll take a motion.
I'll move that the Board of Supervisors authorize a public hearing on the draft Greenbrier-Sabreke Park master plan for March 7th, 2023, and this is Laura.
This is Corey, I second.
Okay, now, are there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Thank you. Okay, so now we move on to Fairbrook, and I think we probably got a lot of the discussion, but I will announce it. So, number eight is review and authorization for advertisement of public hearing to approve the Fairbrook Park master plan, and we'll go back to James Progar.
Deja vu. Same thing. An addendum to the RPOS plan, as led by HRG and Tracy Strickland, was to include in the master plan process for Fairbrook Park. Since then, Fairbrook Park went through the same public input events as Greenbrier-Sabreke Park, municipal mixer, multiple stakeholder group interviews, and many presentations to the Parks and Recreation Committee to deliver a master plan to the Board of Supervisors and attach to this agenda. This agenda is a copy of the Fairbrook Park draft master plan, and Ms. Tracy Strickland will present that one as well.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Can you, everyone still see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Before we show you the, the plan for Fairbrook Park, I just wanted to reiterate a couple key points. We were able to connect with CRPR and double-check a couple things with them, and they gave us some, some great input and feedback on that. The key areas of concern, and you'll see on the plan here in just a second, there are two old ballfields on the site now. Now, one, one still has the ballfield mix in the, in the diamond area now, one does not, and both still have old backstop fencing and safety fencing, and quite old, worn-out conditions from our park assessments. But we wanted to confirm with CRPR first, which they did confirm, that they could be removed, and they would not negatively impact regional recreational programs if they were removed. In fact, removing those older ballfields and replacing them with a level grass playing field, and maybe even some freestanding bleachers around that area would be considered ideal for other ongoing recreation programs. They also took note of the substantial drainage issues at specific times of year in parts of those soccer fields. And then, much like we were thinking at the time, the possibility of raising the elevation of that grass playing surface, if feasible, at some point in the future, and installing natural landscape buffers or additional stormwater management facilities could be ideas that could be supported. So just keep that in mind. I'm gonna change slides and zoom in as best I can. This is a bigger park, so everything looks a little smaller on the screen. I apologize, but I will zoom in and take a tour. On the left, again, is a list of key elements of items adding to the Fairbrook Park plan. And let me zoom in here. On the lower right, again, I'm gonna enter. On the lower right, again, I'm going to enter through the existing parking lot, which again, I'm going to say from our parks assessment last March and last May, the parking lot's in good condition. The only thing we were contemplating and are showing on our master plan is whether or not that mown grass strip in the middle could be converted to a LOMO mix or potential proposed bioswale. And at the time, anyway, there was a porta potty in that island, which really didn't come across as very accessible to us, especially at events when that parking lot might get full. So at the park entrance itself, where the trail, the existing trail in the light gray here, where that begins, we're suggesting a couple of things take place. One is that is there a possibility of moving that porta potty out of the way, out of the parking lot? And I see someone shaking their head, no, I don't know. But hopefully it can be done. And given a home near the parking lot, but out of the direct line of fire of pedestrian traffic after big events. What we also showed in this spot right here with the darker gray, where my hand is tracing along the bottom edge of the open field is, and I'll show you this in a second, move this up a little bit, is a section through the middle of the park and around this edge of the playing fields of proposed new trail. Thereby, the porta potty would have a home around a paved service and be accessible. And then near the existing trail here, we had an interview with the Celtic Soccer Club, which uses Fairbrook Park exclusively for their program. And the request came to us and we put it on the plan for everyone to see at least how it might fit for a permanent storage shed for some of their larger equipment, tucked behind some of the existing landscape plantings already. When we move up the existing trail to the right here, we still show the old ball field, just so it's easy to identify on the master plan. But we've added the note to remove the ball field and the ball mix and all the amenities associated with it, which then allows us to suggest relocating the soccer fields further away from the low spot, which is actually at the upper end of the screen here. The actual spot where a lot of the soggyness tends to collect and sit is in this spot. So the hope was that we could get further away from that and improve the drainage and the access to the fields this way. Moving along the existing trail, along the outer edge between the trail and the road, we think there's an opportunity to propose additional LOMO planting mixes here. When we come up around the existing trail and the potential rain garden or stormwater system or wet meadow, some kind of planting area to absorb some of that excess water. We have noted the existing woodlands and I apologize, the text is blurry, but we do include this as an invasive species management area as well. The addition of proposed accessible trail networks along this edge of the field and then creating kind of a switchback trail connection to the existing trail helps provide more accessibility through that slope that sits in the middle of the park. But also allows us to provide, much like we did at Greenbrier Saybrook Park, a total loop at one end of the park, including one topographical level of the park, as well as a potential opportunity to set some freestanding bleachers next to that. They only have to be three or four rows tall. We're not talking about massive things. But set them here to watch the athletics. It was a little more feasible to do it here than it was along this side of the trail. We don't rule out this side of the trail, but this allowed us to be a little more organized and deliberate with it. And then between the proposed trail sections and the existing trail section as we move up the slope, take advantage of the middle of the park to reconnect a green landscape corridor from end to end, from top to bottom of the park, as you see it on the page. So in these areas here, we're suggesting planting additional native pollinator meadows. And then in this big pocket here, we're suggesting planting or expanding the existing meadow and grow zone that's out there now and permitting this space to become an intentional meadow to forest succession study zone. So again, it would be managed for invasive species, but could allow over time visitors to the park to enjoy its transformation in nature on its own. Additional landscape pieces or the outdoor educational woods here would remain. And again, we have existing woods here. Infill planting to create a nice corridor all the way through the middle, supporting it with native shrub lands, because that's great for habitat and wildlife forage. And then in this section of the park right here, just before we start to really go up the hill, you already have an existing playground there. It's in good condition. The playground surface was in good condition. We're just suggesting that at some point in the future, if you wish to expand that playground by either adding a tot lot or adding additional ADA or adaptive play equipment, the option to add another outdoor classroom or amphitheater space that's connected to these play spaces and sensory garden spaces. And then across the trail, this little pocket of the park was very interesting. The big thing that we heard was keep it quiet. Anything, anything that goes there needs to be a very quiet activity, again, because of the close proximity of residential homes. So we did some infill planting in the existing woodlands, added more shrub lands and are calling it either a children's garden, a butterfly garden, a tea garden, something like that. But something very quiet and ideally passive. From the middle of the park, we make our way up the hill and we kept a large portion of the slope in the middle here, exactly as an old plan actually showed it, as a sledding and kite hill, so that there would be something to do in the wintertime here and or just good open space for just relaxation and again, nature viewing, bird watching, things like that. Gets a little more active on the plan when we get to the top of the park. Topographically, we walk up the path here and/or we drive up from the lower parking lot to the upper parking lot here. A key thing to point out in this parking lot is that from our site visit, that parking lot is a little elusive and it's actually currently gravel. It is not paved. So we're suggesting from a master plan standpoint, that at some point in the future, it might be ideal to pave it or at minimum, pick an area close to the existing and proposed amenities at the top of the park and pave that area with one ADA parking space and an access aisle and signage to meet those parameters. And then that can tie in very nicely to the existing trail system, again, which is light gray, and the proposed trail system, which is the darker gray. The existing pavilion is proposed to remain and be supported by improvements to the playground that are up there now by updating that older play equipment with newer play equipment for five to 12-year-olds. And then also our plans show there's room to add a potential tot lot at this elevation of the park as well, with some shade structures, again, a possible picnic grove to support the pavilion. And then moving through the trail system itself, we can come up to the existing basketball court to remain. There is room for additional court expansion if ever desired or needed, but we did not show any specific sports on the plan. Our, our fun friend pickleball and a ball return wall next to it, plus bocce right here, sitting on this side of the basketball court, all connected by the trail system, connecting back down to the existing trail system and an optional additional pavilion if desired. And then last but not least, the existing woodlands do have some kind of trail system in there now. We're not suggesting that you redo it, tear it out and do it all over again, but either improve the walking surface and expand some additional small trail spurs if needed for the wooden walk or some ideas that came out that were of interest to the Parks Committee, as well as to some of the survey respondents, was a mini mountain bike course, maybe for younger kids. And then last but not least, during all the action here, we had initially placed outdoor exercise stations at intervals along the sloped trail here, but had some concerns because of the slope. So we thought if we're already at the top here, maybe it makes sense to develop a designated area where a few pieces could be congregated together around the accessible route and the parking, et cetera. And then again, just like with Greenbrier Saybrook Park, when you talk about adding impervious surface, you need to address stormwater management. So we think there may be opportunities to fit a rain garden in the open island right here, next to the parking lot. Pick up any overflow with a proposed vegetated bioswale going down the slope here to a rain garden that collects everything here. Fill in some open, just mown lawn slopes again, with proposed shrub lands, LOMO mix areas. And coming back down to the parking lot, again, a potential small bioswale here. Yeah, that is the synopsis of this particular plan. And I'm happy to take questions and comments and take note of any requested edits at this point.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great presentation. So, comments?
I'm glad to kick off. I'm really familiar with this park. It's right down the road from my house and I go really frequently. So a couple thoughts, just generalities to, that others may or may not know about. So along the side of the park that is cut off at the bottom right now, yes, that tree line there. And also then at the top in the panhandle, far left, that tree line, yeah, the line on the border of the property. Those two sides of the property, they have this gorgeous vista out that, those sides there. And now where you are now, that's owned by a farmer. But on the other side, on the entirety of the edge of that property, the, the other side is owned by Penn State. And for all of written history, people were permitted to really traipse from our park over into the Penn State lands. That ended gradually over the pandemic time with some thoughts that we'd be allowed back in post pandemic. But indeed, instead, permanent signs have gone up that we are not permitted there. So where am I going? The people really resisted that change and continued to trespass on Penn State property. And I think that one of the reasons is the beautiful vista. It's, it's, you know, the walking area is wonderful, but it's really about that vista because we have walking trails in here. So what I'm wondering is, can we, along both of those edges, can we note to remove the invasive species with the goal of accessing, accessing the beautiful vistas? Because it's not just a futile exercise. It's actually to bring an amenity into focus for this park. And in fact, probably it's number one amenity, this park. So that would be one. Can we reclaim the vista through noting the invasive species removal? The other thing, we've got so much.
We'll probably go more than five minutes. Notice in 15 minutes so that we make sure we wrap it up.
Thank you. All along this park, there's, there's a ton of trash cans, so many trash cans. I don't know if you noticed. And I just wonder, you know, we're constantly trying to reduce the need for maintenance and most of them just stand empty all the time. And I don't know if plastic bags are going in and out or what. But did you, when you were there, survey the number of trash cans and propose a reduction and maybe select appropriate spaces for them? And then I'm going to pin another question on that also relates to Greenbrier Saybrook. One thing that, other than bathrooms, what people want in our parks is recycling. And it's a shame we can't provide it. Do we have a notation for recycling facilities at both of these parks? Because this is going to be an incremental change sort of thing, where we provide the facility and then we get CRPR to provide the service. So it'll be a group effort. But we won't, if, they won't come if we don't build it, right? Build it and they shall come, right? So we have to put it in there first, did we, for both of them? And can we get some wiggle room on doing that if not? So removal of trash cans in addition of, because they're all rusting and they're in terrible shape.
I'll make a comment on trash cans.
We did not count all of them. But I will say again, I apologize, when you, when you take a drawing and try to smoosh it onto PowerPoint, it doesn't always go well. But what we did show in this area is a proposed bike parking area, but also near where we're thinking the porta potty might be able to live. With input from others is, I think there's a pet waste station there, but it could move. Maybe what we can do in either of these locations right here, we could change these labels or update or add something that says proposed trash and recycling receptacles in this location. And again, again, it's tiny. We showed some locations for pet waste and bike parking up here, in case people are walking the dogs on the trail in the park, if they're allowed to do that. We can add and or change this to say, to include trash and litter receptacles there. And then all other, we can add a note, all other trash or recycling cans to be removed from the park except where noted on the plan.
Thank you. I like those ideas of the notations at those two collection centers where the bike racks and the porta potty are and stuff. I think Lisa's going to add some thoughts about how many trash cans there are and.
I do have thoughts on that. I want you to finish first.
And then along with the maybe excessive trash cans, there's a lot of rusty signs along the perimeter of the property where people used to be able to take their dogs and walk them on Penn State property. Now they're just a tease or an enticement because it says, make sure you clean up after your pet. But really it should just say no trespassing. So could we just maybe remove those signs? Then we'll, we can maybe talk as a group about the pickleball facility. It's definitely nearer to the homes. And I'll say in terms of this park, even though a lot of folks think that the rural area maybe is very, I don't know, like there's fire and fireworks and guns and all that's true. But it's also very quiet and peaceful and there's a lot of stars. So I think that when you look at your ambient noise in the background, you find that in town, you actually have like a lot higher of an ambient noise. So when you're out in our west end, things really carry an echo for so far. So I would be also very concerned about this pickleball site being here for that reason. And then also, if we don't want people drawing out into the community park in Saybrook, we definitely don't want them going out this far because it's really also not conducive to our climate change goals. So bring them all to two deck and they play pickleball where it's non disturbing. So that, and then I think I just have two more things. The trees, three more things. The trees over the paths. I know that CRPR has talked about like maintenance and one of the existing problems with the paths out there the ones that are not paved is that they're gravel and then they mow and then the grass is like a thatch and it goes on top of the gravel. And then it grows weeds and then they put herbicide on and do it all again, do it all again. So like I, I appreciate the idea of the the paving of the paths. I think that's what this master plan is saying. But then I wonder, we already have a lot of wonderful walnut trees out there, which are great. But they already make a mess on the paths. So like, are those trees, the existing ones that are set back from the path and it just looks like they're hanging over? Or is there a proposal to put more? And if so, can we just make sure they're set back a bit from the path so they don't add for maintenance for CRPR? And then the last two things, the facility. The facility, the 20 by 40 or 20 by 30, very large storage facility that's being proposed. Yeah, that's large. My question is for Dave Modricker. Dave, when we, when we rented out a facility to the COG code for their fire safety trailer, what was the size of that facility and what did they pay for it? And I think they're still in there.
Yeah, they're in it for a couple more years.
Approximate is fine.
Yeah, it's maybe 40 by 60 or 80.
So twice as big.
And the rent was basically what it cost to build the facility, prorated out over the lease period. And I don't remember off the top of my head what it was.
Okay, okay. That would be a way I might be comfortable with. That would be a way I might be comfortable with building this facility for CRPR. And then if they wanted to pay us some sort of a rent for this location. Um, or there could be maybe a formal agreement of how we were going to work with them on these kinds of things. But for me, knowing the status of our relationship right now and how we in the past, you know, have charged other COG agencies for the use of our property in this manner, I'm not comfortable with moving forward on this master plan as it currently is without making some notes, if that's the way that the rest of the board want to go. But I would prefer right now to remove it because I've probably been working for six years with CRPR to get that policy in place and it's still not in place and being enforced. So I've got a lot of concerns about us moving forward when they have not yet moved forward in a collaborative way on that. And then the last thing, I sent you all, the board, a file right quick on the floodplain at Fairbrook. If you open that up, you're going to see, um, this, which is the map of the floodplain at Fairbrook Park. And you, like, um, here is the Fairbrook property and then this is the floodplain. So everywhere that you can see soccer field is actually floodplain pretty much. And I, I know that there was discussion about how the moisture is down at that end, but approximately where that arrow points right into the middle of that field, I've had water up to mid shin in the middle of that field. So that's actually really part of the creek. And, um, there are seeps that come through there and it, water flows, it's got a current to it. So if you were to look at the comp study from region, they say, uh, what we should be doing in our park planning, which would be, consider the potential impacts of climate change on park sites, particularly parks with streams, drainage channels and stormwater basins that contain playing fields. Limit development in floodplains and restore historic channel and floodplain topography. Plan for the potential impact of climate change in conjunction with the adopted Center Region Climate Action Plan and Adaptation Plan. So I want to actually do that, what we wrote that we were going to do there. And I would like to make a notation on there that talks about how, instead of actually, uh, putting an expensive stormwater conveyance underlayment in here that was proposed by CRPR costing maybe hundreds of thousands of dollars, I'm not sure, that we should maybe, like, instead excerpt this from the comp study and make it as a note on there and say that in the future, should there be additional facilities developed, that we would want to actually pursue what we've agreed to in the Regional Comprehensive Parks Plan. And instead of developing them, um, restore the historic channel and floodplain topography. So that's the notation I would want there, not to remove them now, not to remove them from the plan, but to simply note that the intent of the region is not to have this kind of facility. So we worked some time to the point where we got this understanding, but the only way that it's going to carry through is if we put it up on, on this master plan. So that's, that's what I, I would suggest. The moving of the fields down this direction, I, I have a lot of concerns about it because although I know that that end is lower and water does go to lower ends, also there's seeps all through that hill there. So the rivulet comes actually toward the bottom of the, yeah, down the hill and then across in a large sheeting action. So that whole thing is a stream bed. Um, so those were my comments on, on that. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, others? And then I'll try to recap, summarize. Other?
I, I always lament the loss of a baseball diamond. Um, even if be one that's of, you know, a little rundown. That's where our T-ball starting players usually end up. And it's nice when those can be in lots of different neighborhoods rather than making parents have to drive, you know, care, it's just starting baseball, having to drive their kids further out to get on a field. So again, I don't know the demographics of this neighborhood as well as the neighborhoods around me, but if there are a lot of kids there, that's, that's my, that's maybe my only comment. I, I saw that there's another backstop that's sort of in the middle of the fields that looks like it just needs to come down. But the, the one that has the actual, um, sand look diamond looks like it's okay. Looks like it's there for T-ball. So I, I, I would personally and on behalf of the baseball players in town, be sad to, to lose a diamond in any of our parks.
Thank you. Other comments?
Anything to add for this one?
Anything else? And then I'll try to, anything on, okay. So we'll just, I'll try to hit some of these things. Um, my points, points I've captured. Uh, we'll try to get through this as expeditiously as we can. Um, so for my comments, one thing I noticed is there's just a lot of paved paths in here. Um, and I'm, I don't know, I guess I'm just not really in favor of adding so many paved paths. I mean, if we need, say, for example, in the orangish area, that extra path cutting across there, I mean, if these are necessary to make these paths accessible, then that's a different story. But there is a paved path going up that hill. And, and so then the, and then additionally, that, uh, long one around the fields, I just, I'm not in favor of adding this much pavement in this area. I just don't see the need. You know, and I've, we've played soccer there. And so I have experience in, in the use of the fields and I might be missing part of the conversation that led to this. So fill us in if there's, if there's additional information I'm missing on that. But that, and then also the additional path through the woodland area and yes, in there. Um, I mean, it is such a unique little place to run and walk. You know, I just, I don't know. I, I just, it, I don't see the benefit really of adding these additional little loops through there. Again, maybe that's something that, uh, those residents asked for. So that's kind of feedback I, I would want to hear at this point too. Okay, so that's that. Um, I wanted to note the, um, the existing tot lot that's down toward the soccer fields. It looks like there are more, uh, shade trees proposed there. And I think that does the same thing that we were talking about at Saybrook where it's going to block, because what happens is people are playing soccer and the kids all run up to that tot lot. It's a tot lot, but all the kids run up and play there. So to add trees there, uh, okay, so that. And then I guess, you know, the same kind of notation for just all the proposed shrubs. And in particular, the one, um, that's, uh, kind of in the middle of the open field. Yes, that one. You know, if there is a, uh, yeah, okay, give me, tell me again in five minutes that I don't keep going. Um, I don't know, you know, it just kind of breaks up this nice open field. You know, it's just such a passive, quiet space. And so I just, coming into this, I didn't think it needed a lot. And so I think I'm trying to kind of take away a little bit. So, um, then I wanted to comment too on the proposal for the bike course in that woodland area. You know, it's a narrow path and people do run on there. They run with dogs and you just can't see people coming, uh, if they're coming quickly on a bike around there. So I just don't see that as a great place to, uh, encourage that. Um, again, please fill me in if I'm missing some kind of conversation. I haven't used that for bike riding or whatever, this, the, the mountain bike course. So maybe it's preferable. So that would be my comment there. Okay, and we'll start at, um, the trash cans. There are a lot, but I think it really contributes to the lack of trash laying around that park. That park never has litter. And so, and I really, you know, I walk my dogs there, a lot of people do. And so the more trash cans, to me, the better. I absolutely see the point about maintenance, I do. Um, but I think it, I think it just, and maybe there's, you know, maybe there's something else that needs to happen there. But I, I always feel like that just contributes to the cleanliness, the more, the better. So maybe there's a, a better way to manage it, you know, I would. Okay, and then I wanted to, uh, speak to the storage shed. I'm kind of neutral, I didn't hear any other feedback on that. I mean, if it's something that we need at this point, I would add it. But if not, I would not probably include it on our master plan for the park. And we look to have that as something that's brought forward later. Or, or maybe, um, listed as optional amenity instead so that it's not, uh, proposed per se. Okay, comment on the view. Um, I'll echo that a lot of people, there are actually benches there to look out over. So, um, I guess wherever it says, um, I can't see that, uh, you know, existing shrubs and there's nothing there.
This one?
Yeah, probably down below that, I would say, you know, wherever those benches are, you know, we'd probably want to.
They're right around here. But I'm going off memory from last time I visited the site, but I think I remember walking up to the top of the hill near the parking lot and saying the same thing, like, wow, isn't that nice? What a reward for, for me hiking it all the way up here.
Exactly, so a note.
Kind of where I've got the existing pavilion label. We can move that label and, and add, you know, the notes as requested.
Yeah, add the, add the bench because it's existing there. And then the note, um, you know, removing invasives to promote, uh, you know, preservation of the, of the buche. Okay. That, um, trash cans, the benches, you know, with the fields. So is there in this master plan, any proposed, uh, irrigation, changes to elevation of the fields? Or is it just the lining, like the paint striping of the field? That's what I saw.
Correct. At a master plan level, it's mostly showing conceptually where things fit, how they fit on the site. And then if we need to add, but there's no irrigation plan. There's no detailed, for example, engineering drainage plan that could be developed at a future stage to address that slope issue, the sheet flow across, maybe put French drains along one edge to collect any of that water and keep it away from the playing field surface. So mostly it's just showing what could fit where, if particularly if this ball field diamond mix went away.
So, and right, and I'll get to that in a second. So maybe these two go together. I think, you know, I, I wouldn't want to put, you know, maybe policy statements on the master plan, but I see the, I understand what you're saying. I think in this master plan, there isn't that kind of proposal here. Um, I think it would make sense to note the floodplain on this so that it's recognized that that's what we're working with here.
Could we, yeah, could we ma, could we put the floodplain on that? That'd be great.
And that way, when we're comparing it in the future to our master, or our, uh, parks plan, regional parks plan, we've got some basis for what's going to happen there. And then my final comment would be, I agree. I am nostalgic, but also, you know, sad to see that baseball diamond go because it is one where you can just go and practice. It is a really good practice area. But once again, I don't know the data offhand for, you know, keeping it versus getting rid of it and then reshaping these fields. Because to me, it looks like they're turned from where, the difference? The, um, teams usually play and, you know, just from my experience, I think there's usually maybe two or three going the other way. And then the baseball diamond at the end. So that would be another consideration. If there's, if there is need and interest in having this one baseball diamond kept, you know, and getting rid of the other one that's not usable. So to summarize all that, so we've got a number of things on here. Um, and I guess I would look to the rest of the board for any kind of, uh, consensus on some of these suggestions and then to the manager, on how to move forward at that point. So was there anything that stood out that the rest of the board agrees, disagrees with, wants to note based on the last couple rounds of comments?
No, I just agree with putting the floodplain, listing that on there.
I think we want to remove the pickleball court.
Thank you. The one thing I forgot to write down, thank you. Thank you, Corey, yes.
So I, I, uh, I move that we remove pickleball courts, uh, from the master plan.
I'll second, it's Laura, second.
That was Corey doing that, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion on that motion? Thank you. Okay, if not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, thank you.
Everything you said I agree with and I, I, some of the points, I think we should maybe consider motions to amend the plan. Uh, eagle eye over here, I missed some of these really important things and I'm so thankful you brought them up.
Is it enough to go back? And I want to make sure there's consensus because I just kind of laid out all my thoughts at the end there.
They were good.
Thanks.
Can I try to reflect some of them to you that I supported? And then we can maybe take some motions if.
Yeah, let's get from the manager how we need to proceed here. Um, is this enough significant change to, uh, to go back? And then bring back again?
Uh, well, let me just confirm what I have here, that you'd like to convert the paved path to remain as gravel, is that correct?
Um, there are a number of proposed paved paths where there aren't any. So, um, that was my suggestion to look at and remove. The, uh, the one in the woodland area, there's additional paved paths plus paving the current path. Um, I'm neutral on paving the current path and whatever is easiest. Oh, I'm sorry, there was one more thing. The other path noted, the little trail through the woods isn't noted on here. Just a little walking trail.
Oh, the little footpath.
Yeah, there's a little footpath through the existing woodlands.
Oh, you know, from the bottom to the top.
Yeah, so I just wanted that to be noted in there as well.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, so that's, the paved path, I would just say, if that's something you want to change, we should take a motion on that. If you want to keep what's being proposed to go from gravel to paved, to keep as is, maybe take a motion. Um, and that, and that too, I would say there's some, there'd been a lot of conversation about a reduction of spraying because of some of the weeds coming up through the gravel. So it, you know, it was kind of a proposed balance to respond to spraying.
Yeah, and that's, that's fair because it does transition from paved to gravel. Um, so I'd be supportive of paving what's gravel. My suggestion was to not add additional paved paths unless what's been put in front of us is needed for some type of.
Connectivity.
Yes, some needed, uh, connectivity to make it accessible that's not already there. So, you know, say, yeah, go ahead.
I think this could stay a rusted path in the woodland area. I don't think that's a problem. And I think if we take the pickleball courts out, we can pull back and or alter the extensive proposed trails up here. And these again, could be changed to a stabilized trail surface aggregate instead of additional paving. Now it still would be considered impervious from a stormwater standpoint, but it would not be as jarring as putting yet more asphalt, uh, on the site. And then maybe down here, I'm hearing we might pull. I, I'm still in favor of keeping this because of how steep that slope is. But I do think if, if you don't want to ring the whole field area with it, we could certainly remove that extent, maybe just, you know, pave what we need to right down here. We can take another look at just how much of this will get you up the hill a little more comfortably. This is actually pretty steep through here and again through here. But that said, um, I do think we can pull back the extensive paved areas and convert some other areas either back to gravel or keep them proposed as a stabilized gravel path.
Yeah, I would just say, I think if you have the, if you're going to add one of the two paths, either. either around the fields by the orange area, and then you're adding that one, and then we're adding the one just to the left of that, sorry, in the orange, yes, adding that one as well.
There's three additional ones in there, if I understand correctly.
Or we don't do, or we don't do that. We stick with the existing path, and maybe this just connects up and that's that for now. You know?
Could I make a motion?
Yeah, and then I just want to clarify, so there was a, a note of a sledding hill. Now, I don't know if people do sled through there because it is a lomo area there now.
It's cut down in the winter for the specific purpose of maintaining the sledding hill.
Okay, so that is, we'd be cutting right through that sledding hill that would go from the existing.
We'll take that out, we'll take that out.
No, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the orange area now. Is that what you're talking about?
Oh, this one?
Below, yes, there. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I'm trying to decide, so in, there's so many, so it, can you go through, is the existing path under the trees there?
Yeah, so the existing path is the light gray, and it kind of does this broad curve, straightens out through here, and then does a pretty strong hook here. The dark, just so to get some bearings, the darker green are existing tree groupings out there now, per the survey base or the GIS aerial base that we had to work with. So I suspect that this area, tell me if I'm wrong, but I suspect this is not where people were sledding.
No, correct.
Because somewhere in here, this side of the path, this side of the path is one of the grow zones. So that's why we were thinking, and this, this shrub lands easily, we take that out. It was leftover from when we weren't sure if we needed to add more court games up here. So this goes away, this goes away, this could still all be open. The topography is the high point here, and it's tending to go down this way. We'll do that one more time.
So I'll, I'll move, I'll move that we remove the proposed new paved trail that is along the floodplain, that has the three little bleachers. I'm going to propose, in that same motion, I'll propose those bleachers get flipped to the other side where most people sit along the trail. And then also that the other trail that is proposed, that is the asphalt proposed trail, right next to it that cuts through the sledding hill, is part of my motion of removal. So the motion is to remove that one that Tracy's taken her cursor on, that cuts through the sledding hill, to remove the one that's at the bottom of the sledding hill adjacent to the floodplain, and to move the bleachers to the other side where the pathway is, where everybody constantly moves the picnic tables where they want to sit. So where they're currently sitting over there. So we might as well go where they are. That's my motion.
Thank you.
Do you have a second?
I'll second. This is Patty.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions on those suggestions? Okay, no discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, thank you for offering that, that was very clear.
Next, I will move that we remove the additional paved paths in the woodland area. Just for topic of discussion, try to be direct. I move that we remove the additional paved paths, and I'll add that there are beautiful violets all through there. It's really a meditative, relaxing space that we probably don't need a mountain biking trail. It's very small in there. So that's my proposal.
Second.
Thank you. And I'll just reiterate, if, if the proposal remains that the outer loop that's existing has been paved, I think.
I move that the outer loop that is existing just remains gravel and doesn't get paved within the woodland area. However, I move that we continue to pave the existing paths that are in the grassy area that get covered by grass and grow weeds on it. Is that too much for one motion? Want to break it out into two?
So your original, is this building on your original motion?
I don't know, I'm just trying.
Do you want to retract your?
Let me start it, I retract it all.
Original motion, and is that acceptable to whoever seconded?
Yeah, okay, thank you. So Mike, right, so the motion is that we just keep, I have lost track where I'm, I think I had it. Just keep the gravel on the existing path in the woodland area. Stop there.
Second.
I think I'm following, and then you'd like to keep, you'd like.
But wait, we didn't vote on that one yet.
Yeah, you got it.
Correct, I just want to have discussion for one second. Are you going to then propose that we pave that outer loop in the woodland area?
No, I was proposing that we keep it gravel in the woodland area.
Okay, but you're not mentioning the new paths at this point.
I already proposed that we remove them and that they were gone, I thought. Except for I might have in my head done all the motions at once.
But that was the original motion that was retracted? Correct, yes. That was the original motion that was retracted.
Sorry, okay. So my original motion that was retracted, I feel like I should take myself out of the game right now.
I think we can craft this. So if you want to retract the one you just made.
I retract that one too.
Okay.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
I think, so what I was suggesting is we, is we do pave that outer loop because then we don't have to deal with the spraying and all of that.
It doesn't get sprayed in there because there's no grass.
Oh, that's not one of the ones.
Up in the woodland area, it doesn't get a lot of sunlight. There's not a lot of weeds growing through. But it, but where she had the cursor kind of, the weed, no, not there. There's not a lot of growth that happens in that area. You go further down, outside of the woodland area, and that's where you start to see some of the weeds around the playground and leading up to the playground and between the woodland area.
Okay, so I think your motion just needs to be to remove the new paths in the woodland area and maintain a gravel surface on the existing path. Is that correct?
I thought I already moved that we remove, but I retracted it.
But then you retracted it.
Yes, my motion is that we remove the new proposed paths within the woodland area and that we keep the existing outer loop to be gravel that is currently within the woodland area.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
Great.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to recommend that staff take some time to actually revise this master plan, bring it back for review and authorization for a public hearing. It's the March 7th, the public hearing be held on March 21st for this master plan.
Very good, do we, so will that?
Do we need to move that for you?
Yeah, what kind of motion do you want?
Actually, you've done everything, you've already motioned for the, for the revisions for this master plan. We'll bring a revised visual back to you for review at the March 7th meeting, and then ask for your authorization to advertise for a public hearing to be held on March 21st.
Thank you so very much.
Another path change that I forgot. So the playgrounds are not connected by a path that leads directly to them. So when you have a stroller, you have to leave your baby far away from you. You can't get the baby over to the playground or to the, to the, to the bench. Isn't there a bench near that playground? So like you're going, so I've always wondered why the path doesn't actually go to the playground itself. It skirts around it. Did you, yeah. So see how at the basketball court, the path goes all right up to the basketball court? Not a lot of strollers need to go over there. But anyway, so, so just, just, I don't know if I need to motion that, Lisa. Can we extend the path to the playground?
Do we need an extension for that?
Okay, I move that we extend one of the appropriate paths to the playground.
This is Patty, I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay.
On the topic of the ball field, Corey.
Yes.
So I'm also confused about the desire to remove the ball fields here because just a few months ago, Lisa, it seems like in my mind, when we were talking about the Cecil Irvin master plan in the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Planning Committee meetings, it was when we wanted to change the master plan of Cecil Irvin to add an amphitheater into there. In that meeting, the park authority representative was talking about how important that we not remove the ball field that's proposed for that master plan from it. So it was confusing to me because in the West End, you've got Cecil Irvin, Fairbrook, the Meadows, and then the ball fields at the elementary school. And the CRPRA broke their lease, or whatever it was called, with the ball fields at the elementary school. They're proposing we remove the ball fields out of here, but they wanted the ball field that hasn't been built yet at Cecil Irvin, and there's no ball field at Meadows. So I don't know any, I don't know why, what the logic is there.
So could I suggest that in this review and revision time, that gets reviewed about the, the need for the ball field or lack thereof and, and the?
I didn't share with you a, a conversation that we had when staff did the review. And, and really, it was acknowledging that we haven't received any comments or expressed concerns about that, with the exception of that it's not very well maintained. But there's not a lot of use or expressed use. And so when we were identifying, you know, do we want to maintain this and keep up with the cost when we're not here, when we didn't hear from the public at the public engagement events that this is an air, you know, and I'm not saying that it's not used, we just didn't hear that. And acknowledging that the soccer fields, you know, and to your point, Lisa, our supervisor Strickland, the soccer fields were actually bumped closer to that stormwater. I, I want to call it a basin, but Tracy, I'm not sure what we're referring to that on the, on the other.
Yeah, it's a low lie, it's a naturally occurring low lying spot that's collecting and holding a lot of water.
Thank you. And so while we certainly can visual, you know, add a visual to show the floodplain there in that area, the idea was that we'd pull the, the baseball diamond out because there, we didn't receive expressed interest for use of that. And, and it needs to be, if we keep it, it needs to be, I think, Tracy, you mentioned either repair or replacement. And so we just acknowledged we would pull that out. And there was a, there was a comment or a suggestion to add an additional soccer field, and staff didn't, we didn't, we didn't hear a request for additional soccer fields, so just leaving it open and really utilizing that open space closer to the low lying area. So no grading, just kind of a maneuvering of the soccer field and ripping out the diamond. But if the board would like to see that remain, that's certainly something you can discuss.
What I will suggest, and this is also in the interest of time, because we have several items to get through, is, it's not going to be removed tomorrow. So this is just on the plan. So to, maybe there is, A, an option to keep the fields as they are now with the baseball field, or maybe there's a way to maneuver these two longer fields and keep the baseball field and note it in there as optional removal of baseball fields.
And also soccer fields when the flood.
So if that's, okay, we don't need a motion for that because that's just text. Okay, so, anything else? Anything at all?
I'll only add on the baseball front, that the State College Little League has been investing in the Lions Park field over the last couple of years, restoring it. And so that, that, you know, that's not that far away. It's a location the Little League has decided to put resources into, so. You know, if, if really the community, again, this is not my part of the township, so if the community down there is not clamoring for an extra T-ball field, there clearly is a need for soccer, I mean, we have a need for soccer fields. We have a need for well-drained soccer fields.
Thank you. And I know we've had those kinds of discussions with the Teenure League folks, so, you know, about their field. So maybe that is a conversation that can be had when the time comes for that. So thanks for bringing that up. Okay, are we ready to move on from this item? And I will thank Ms. Strickland so much.
So much.
For your work on this and working with us through that.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you so much. These are important assets, and so it did take longer than I imagined, but I do appreciate the conversation. Okay, we'll move on to final land development plan, MP machinery with Ms. Worgo.
Thank you. Provided with the agenda is MP machinery and testing final land development plan dated January 24th, 2023. Land development plan is located 2161 Sandy Drive. The parcel is approximately 1.4 acres in its own light industry research and development. This plan proposes the construction of a 8,000 square foot addition to the existing building. On January 3rd, 2023, the Board of Supervisors reviewed and approved the conditions of the preliminary land development plan. The planning commission reviewed the final plan at the February 13th meeting. I am recommended approval to the Board of Supervisors. I included in the agenda a memo from myself dated February 8th, 2023, with staff's recommendation with approval conditions as attached. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and start with a motion.
I move the Board of Supervisors approve the MP machinery and testing final land development plan with condition as described in the Planning Director's memorandum dated February 8th, 2023. This is Laura.
This is Corey, I second.
Okay, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, thank you. Right, thank you, Jenna. Okay, up next, review for approval of authorities, boards, and commissions, ABC work plans for Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee, Planning Commission, and Tree Commission.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Provided with the agenda are copy, is a copy of the Tree Commission work plan, the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee work plan, as well as the Planning Commission work plan for your review and consideration for adoption or approval.
Thank you. So the plans were included. I have some comments, but I'll start with the board. If you have comments or questions on any of these work plans. And I can, oh, go ahead.
Well, I think my only comment is on the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Planning Committee work program. The paint lines to distinguish parking spaces on State Route 45 is listed as a medium level priority. And I would say that is probably, of all of these things, probably the highest level priority that we have for the Small Area Planning Committee. So I wouldn't even care if everything else went to a L, if that was made to an H. So I can't really emphasize enough how important it is to paint the lines so we know what we're working with. So that's my comment. Could we change that to an HHH infinity? And if some other priority has to drop because of it, that's totally fine.
Do you need a motion for that to change it in there? Okay.
I will move that on the Small Area Planning Committee work program, item number 20, paint lines to distinguish parking space on State Route 45 be elevated to highest priority as opposed to medium. Do you have a second?
This is Patty, I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Thank you. Okay, anything else on that? I had a few, my comments were more general, starting with Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee. There are a lot of tasks marked as initiate or in progress this year for in the first and second quarter. There was just, it seemed loaded, like a lot of work early in this year. So I was wondering about if there is a concern from staff and the manager about that workload? Is that fine, is this something that there is concern about, or?
For the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee?
Yes, for that, because with, with the Planning Commission is more. Routine, you know, you get what you have to do from the, you know, from the state. Yeah, so there's not that, that much to decide. This is a new body, an advisory body, and so we're still working out the workflow, you know, the pace at which we're doing this. And so it's a good check-in point for that, I think. So I just wanted to make sure. So I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't, uh, you know, pressure coming from the board to move faster and so, I just needed to kind of check the.
Yeah, I know, I think it's a great question, and, and I'll certainly yield to Jenna. I think that, you know, it, it is a pretty lofty ambitious goal for Q1, Q2 that are established, maybe even itemized as objectives. I think that's something that, you know, I don't want to speak for Jenna, but I think she's had that conversation with the chair, and there's conversations about expectation and, and understanding that's also by design, you know, the creation of that group is a working group. And so understanding that ultimately, um, there's a lot of work that can be facilitated through that committee and staff is working to, you know, achieve the work as time permits. But I'll certainly look to Jenna to see what she might want to add to that.
Uh, yeah, to play off of some Tris's comments, this is a working committee, so the real big difference between their work program and Planning Commission, whatever it is driven by them, uh, so each individual area, community engagement events, history and heritage, et cetera, et cetera, each individual, uh, committee member is assigned to that one topic area. And a lot of the initiate planning or in progress, they've been working on all of last year as well. So I would say it's already started. And really, if this, these recommendations can be coming out of, um, the Pine Grove Mills Advisory Committee to the board, and then through, a lot of this stuff has to go through Planning Commission, and their work program is directly tied to everything coming out of the Pine Grove Mills Advisory Committee. So trying to get them head started on a lot of that stuff. So then anything that can be moved over into Planning Commission, we can get our process going.
Yeah, I mean, the, the short answer is yes, there is, there are a lot of ambitious goals established, and it does add to staff's workload and that, and, and as we shift this, you know, work plan design, you know, coming from staff to the board and then going to the, to, to the advisory committees, I think that that will assist with some of what we're experiencing right now. But as I think Jenna said very well, it's, you know, they've been, the goals and objectives have been there since last year. And as long as Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee understands that they're a working group, and so if they have time, they can pick up and move forward some of the goals. And as staff has time, we try to do the same. But ultimately, you may recall, this was created when former manager Dave Pravolka was here and was really able to, to dedicate some time to, you know, share the time commitment with the Planning Director. And now the Planning Director's really kind of taking that on herself and, you know, in addition to the workload she has for the Planning and Zoning Department. So, you know, we're, we're restructuring and trying to reestablish how we're achieving some of these goals. And as long as the board understands that staff will prioritize that in collaboration with the manager, and the working group is, is understanding of that process as well, we're doing our best to work through those items.
Thanks, that answers my question. Go ahead. Did we, I know, I have no brain left. Did we, in our budget, pass a staff member? I thought we did, but it was a three-two vote for planning and zoning. Didn't we pass hiring a staff member for planning and zoning?
I believe that passed, I'll confirm to be sure.
I know, it's like, I think it was three to two, and it's after 10.
But I remember it was, well, and it wouldn't have been three to two, right? Because I think that's where a lot of the confusion with that, uh, budget discussion happened, is we had a, a board of four. And so two to two would have failed. And so I need to go back.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll revisit that to confirm.
So just hearing what's been discussed tonight, I think that if it did pass, that would maybe take some of that workload. Not that, not that it's still not constant reprioritization, but if we pass that higher, that'd be great to know.
Yeah, and I think, um, I think just being, allowing staff to have that, you know, flexibility of saying, you know, this is assigned to committee members as they're able to and, you know, not, there, there's already work listed in the Small Area Plan, we don't need to create new things. So I think that's, you know, just staying to that, you know, not, yeah. So I think, I think that'll be important this year. Anything else? Anything else that you needed from us in discussion on these plans? Okay. If there's nothing else, we will take a motion.
I'll move that the Board of Supervisors approve the work plan for the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee, the Planning Commission, and the Tree Commission, and this is Laura.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no? Okay, thanks very much. Thanks Jenna, if that's your last item. Thanks very much for staying on.
Dave Modricker always gets the last.
Right. Okay, so let me just make sure I'm in the right spot. Okay, so next up, we have an update on Pine Grove Mills Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project, the TASSA program, and that'll be with Mr. Modricker.
All right, I'll try to be brief, but try to keep your attention also delayed hour. So the township did receive $700,000 in grant funding for a mobility improvement project in Pine Grove Mills on sections of 2645 and Nixon Road. We also entered into a, where we went through a consultant selection process, selected a consultant, did it according to PENDOT procedures. We budgeted $200,000 for design for a $700,000 construction project, which seems reasonable, right? Well, the consultant design proposal at this point is about $385,000, significantly more than our estimate. And I would expect that construction, based on the field views and the input and all the discussions that we have, is probably going to be more than that $700,000 too. Haven't done an estimate, and we don't, we don't have an estimate to know that for certain. So I'm kind of laying the groundwork to think about a couple of different things. One is if we want to stay with the full scope of the project, it's likely going to cost more money than we have budgeted. Two, we can think about de-scoping the project, and by that I mean things like the widening on 45, maybe stop it at Piney Ridge and it doesn't go all the way out to Ross Street. Or on Nixon Road where we're replacing sidewalk, maybe we're not replacing all the existing sidewalk, we just put in that last hundred or two feet of missing sidewalk to Chestnut. On Nixon Road, we'd like to have a rapid rectangular flush of beacon, but it may not necessarily be needed based on volumes. We could perhaps, you know, eliminate that. We can also look for additional sources of funding, but we have timeframes that we need to meet for this particular grant funding. If we, if we do continue down the path of design everything, build everything, it's likely that we'll be back in front of you for a budget amendment when we know what those numbers are to complete those tasks. I don't know how much more you want to get into tonight. I can answer any other questions you have, or if you have a sense of any of those options seem more appealing than others, you know, I'd like to know. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I just want to throw out as well that the, you know, that the expectation on the side of PENDOT is that we have our design work completed by the end of this year. So that, you know, and while we have asked PENDOT if there is a risk of de-scoping, what impact, if any, will that have on us receiving that $700,000? While we refer to it as a grant, it's the transportation set aside program. Uh, so we, you know, we're, we're not, it's not confirmed by PENDOT if we de-scope what impact that could have on our award. And while the TASSA program does acknowledge that they pay 100% of construction cost, it was estimated to be $700,000 last year. But as inflation is, you know, showing that our, our cost is increasing for construction, I would fully agree that we're likely to see that increase. And as Dave said, we're really bringing this to you more of an update, so there's not any surprise moving forward, understanding that there are discussions to try and have containment costs or costs contained.
Okay, so it sounds like what will come back to us then in another update is whether or not we can de-scope, and if so, what are those options or doing the budget amendment? So.
Yeah, staff will have to act pretty quickly because of the deadline, right? And so, you know, we've, we've asked PENDOT for a specific date, and they've not been able to provide that to us. They just acknowledged that by the end of the year, the design work has to be completed. Uh, so it's an update, so there's no, just to be fully transparent, that we may need to make a decision in terms of awarding the bid, but wanted you to, to know that right now we're looking at a bid award of $385,000.
Right, okay.
But exploring de-scoping options as well.
Okay, and you're waiting, but again, you're waiting to hear back from PENDOT if de-scoping is an option. Okay, thank you.
Good question. So I don't know if this is considered de, well, two questions. First, the design, even if we de-scope on the construction, are, are, is the goal of the design still for the whole project, or would it be just for the scope?
You could do it either way.
Either way, okay. So I figure you're going to talk to PENDOT about all of that kind of stuff, right? Okay. And then if we end up doing some version of de-scoping that does involve, I love that suggestion you made of just continuing the sidewalk where it ends, getting the whole way to Chestnut. I was walking that sidewalk the other day and noticed it goes around a tree, which I love, and I like never want that to end. But, um, that seems like it would be a major savings because wow, there, like to redo that existing looks like a nightmare and I don't even, wow.
It looked very different than it does.
Right, and then the impacts and wow, yes. So then the idea of that extension, it's very appealing to me right off the bat. It, would that be considered a de-scoping if we were to do something like that?
That's what I'd like, I'd need to get more clarity from.
The level of.
I asked the question to District Two, they bumped it to Central, and Central bumped it back to District Two.
Oh, good times.
Yeah, so I gotta, I gotta get some clarity on that. If we did lessen the length on 45, it would certainly save in construction money. It's got a logical terminus going into the Piney Ridge neighborhood. There's a large section at Guy Road between there and Ross Street that we've learned we're going to have to replace if we do the widening through that area too.
Okay, I see, gotcha. Gotcha, thanks, thanks.
Other questions? And I know CCMPO, the Coordinating Committee, meets next Tuesday, so I don't know if Technical Committee met this week, um, but I guess we could reiterate that the township is waiting for answers because there's always a District Two representative at that meeting, so, um, we can.
We'll keep the guardrail in Slab Cabin if they'll give us the, the changes to our grant terms.
Right. So, okay, so thank you for the update.
Yes.
Thank you very much for the update. I guess we'll see what PENDOT says and make a decision based on that information. Okay, so we are moving on now to review of the Center Region Council of Government Budget Guideline Timeline and Budget Priorities.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So while this is an item that has me introducing it, I just want to acknowledge that this is actually coming from the representative for the Finance Committee, Supervisor Dinini, who attended that meeting and I imagine has more to share beyond what I've provided in the narrative and the agenda.
Well, the thing about that is after 10 o'clock, it's like, what I have to share plummets in usefulness. So, yes, so Finance Committee has asked for feedback on the budget timeline and priorities. I had to go to the COG website then to download those attachments. I don't know if you all had them, or if we want to shoot them up on the screen, because they're essential for you to be able to provide feedback. So, uh, one of them, I don't know if anybody has them in front of them, or if we want to share screen.
Yeah, it was, the list of priorities was also shared in the Executive Committee Agenda today, if that's an easier way to find it. They were the same priorities, I think the wording was slightly different than what was in Finance, but it was.
And I can start with them because it's actually like way easier of a document that you may not need, um, a visual aid. So the, the draft priorities, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of them. And when I reviewed the list, for me, if I, what I felt like, if I were a staff member trying to implement these as a priority in the budget, I felt like it wouldn't be very helpful because of the language. So if it's not, it's language like, is it a priority to address economic impacts, or is it a priority to prepare for the future of the COG and the COG facilities? Or is it a priority to have efficient interconnected shared services delivery ecosystem? So like, for me, as I read through this list, the answer was yes. Like, the way that the priorities are written, to me, seemed to be just the statement of what COG is to do generally. So, um, I don't know if you all have any other kind of a thought on, on that. Are we able to share this or?
I'm unable.
It wasn't, okay. I have it up if anybody wants to. I'm not zooming in, but.
It should be part, I can't.
It's not in the agenda. You go to the COG website and then go to the Finance Committee and then go to.
It's in our packet.
I was going to, yeah, it should be in our.
Yeah, my, my attachments didn't come through in there.
The list of priorities might, I think that was a separate attachment in Finance Committee, but if you go to the Executive Committee Agenda that was in there today, I think you can find it easily. So if you go to the Executive Committee Agenda.
So I don't, I, like, I don't know how helpful these are going to be, or kind of why we're doing this exercise, because for me, it kind of pitted like the staff against programs. So like, you know, do we want to commit to an inclusive, healthy, sustainable community? Or do we want to take care of COG staff? It's not an either or to me. It's by taking care of COG staff, we achieve an inclusive community, so.
And if you want me to add a little context from today, that might be helpful, because we sat around in an executive committee trying to say like, oh, because, you know, what, what should we do with this? Because Finance had this list of priorities, sent it over to Executive Committee really to see as well, and to kind of say that how should we set this in motion, how should we use this? And it was looked at, or explained to us, that this set of priorities is what will be used when COG departments present their budget requests to, I guess, Finance Director or Executive Director, as they're creating their CIP and their budget for new items, this is what those new items would be weighed against. Does this meet one of the priorities? If so, how high on the priority list? So this would be a tool to measure those new requests. This is how it was described to me. I'll also share then, the discussion was about how to get feedback on this exact list of priorities that was drafted. So to say as well, that the first four, I really hope I'm not misquoting what was said today.
None of this happened in Finance, so I'm glad you guys talked about it in exact.
This is what, this is what I gathered and can say back at 10:40 at night. So the first half of the, the priorities list is really what was, um, decided at Finance at the end of last year in those budget discussions, these are the priorities. Then there were some additional ones added as time went on to try to help this process of, um, judging, approving new budget line item requests, so. And I think, like I said, this, the wording was slightly different in what I had today, but I'm seeing it looks generally the same. Okay, so that was that. Then we talked about the procedure moving forward, um, and in the end, after a great deal of discussion, it was decided that the priorities will be put into the consent agenda for the General Forum to be sent to municipalities to get feedback. And. agenda for the General Forum to be sent to municipalities to get feedback and then to be resubmitted back to COG, to the Executive Director, who will then send it back to Executive Committee.
This, on this list? We're doing all that with this list right here?
On this list. I shared that we'd be having this discussion this evening because there's some concern about time. If the Executive Director is going to use, however we're prioritizing spending of the COG resources, he needs to, he wants to know that by the time he's reviewing budget proposals from the departments. All that to say, what I suggested to him that I thought would occur tonight is that we take this draft list of priorities and do what they said. They said, you know, please order them, you know, as you want them ordered. And I suggested we'd probably be, you know, rewording them, you know, maybe, and I said, maybe we'll come back with five or six. There, there was a lot of discussion today just about how to get that feedback, how to move forward in a timely manner, but not excluding any input. So there's that. I hope I made that as clear as possible. So I think.
You're clear as a bell. It's just the list that we have is, it's sort of like it's out of a vision statement. It's very.
Agreed. And that's why I, there was some talk about that too. Like, they're pretty general. They're pretty general.
Yeah, those things you did for our budget were, that I just like saw some weird flash. Like, it was coming out of my brain. Like, boy, I wish we could have those things like our manager did. Those are good budget priorities. It's how, right, the strategies that you gave us.
Well, and I'm, I'm referring to the, to the memo that the managers had issued, I think to the Finance Committee last year, some of the recommendations and suggestions. I don't know if they were.
Yeah, they're, they're not these.
In Exact Committee or Finance Committee.
And we didn't review the actual priority list today at Executive because we wanted to, you know, we're trying to decide the, the process of how to get the feedback. So, so that's that. So what I would suggest is we give our feedback on these priorities at this time. Maybe there are others that we have that aren't listed here, but this is our time to give this input and I expect that will be the case for all the municipalities looking at this. They'll have their own and it's going to be up to, between the Executive Director, Executive Committee, sending it back to Finance to be able to use this as a tool for the budget. Okay. That, and then we also needed to touch on the guideline and timeline, which I don't think will take as long. So.
I was thinking it would be the opposite, but I do want to hear from others. Like, what do you think of this list? Do you have a strategy by which you would prioritize these? Or are they all number one? Number one, number one, number one, number one. And, sorry, just kind of. Are you still, is it past 10 o'clock and it's, yeah, yeah.
Is this an item you would like to have further discussion at the next, what is it, March 8th?
A work session?
I was just going to suggest maybe even the last.
It's before Finance, we could do it.
Before Finance, next regular meeting? Yeah, then the request was going to be that the discussion was completed, okay, by March 8th.
So we can do the 7th.
So if we put it on for the 7th, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that. Yeah.
If, so we can table it right now?
You won't be here and we'll, we'll need.
I, I will be flying in that afternoon. So while I don't plan on running the meeting, I can join this discussion if you'd like me to.
Budget timeline and guidance would be essential for you to be there, I would think.
So I can, I can try to attend the meeting, but I won't be running the meeting.
Sorry.
That's fine. And then I guess we'll just have to, Finance is on the 9th. Is that, so we'll just have to have everything kind of turned over quickly if that's.
And if I'm unable to attend the meeting, I'll provide you with information via email and a memo.
Okay.
Just, just to provide some insight and thoughts that you would have heard from me if I wasn't attending.
And then I think, you know, probably what I learned today can be useful in this discussion. And then whatever we see in the General Forum Packet will be useful for that. And we can all come with, you know, maybe our own edits on these priorities and just have something really ready to turn around so it can get to Finance in time. Okay. So we will, I'll be ready for that discussion.
Thank you so much.
No, I think, I think that makes sense. And, you know, like I said earlier, the, you know, that part discussion went longer than I thought it would, but I think it needed to happen so that we didn't approve something that wasn't well thought out. So, okay. So that is that. So are we comfortable leaving it with that? We're moving that to.
March 7th.
March 7th. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you to all.
Sure. Up next is Board Member Request, Discussion on Township's Financial Health and Options for Budget Management, which is a tough one to get into at 10:45 PM. But I'm going to, yes, go ahead.
I was just going to suggest if you would like, Madam Chair, we could add this. To a discuss, as a discussion item for the March 8th work session.
Oh, that would be.
Unless if you were looking for the Board to take some official action, but even having the conversation, we can move the action to the following meeting.
Yeah. And I don't think, I wasn't looking for official action tonight. So I'd be comfortable moving that to the work session.
Okay, so we would just table it to the work session scheduled for March 8th?
Yeah.
Very good. Okay.
Do you need motions for us to table those things?
I do.
Yeah, so we'll need a motion to, okay, so this is from March 7th. Did you need, did you need a motion for the COG budget item? Because that would.
We did table that. I apologize, Madam Chair. Yes.
Okay.
Robert's rules would suggest that we take official action to table the item for a specific date or acknowledgement for a future regular meeting.
Okay, so let's do a motion for the COG budget item first, and that is going to move to March 7th.
So moved. This is Patty. Second, Laura.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So now we'll take a motion to table item 13, the Board Member Request to the Work Session on March 8th, if that is working schedule wise. Okay.
So moved. This is Cory.
Second by Laura.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, saying no? Okay. All right. Thank you for managing the movement of those items. Okay. Up next is Communications to the Board.
I had communications on trash, the solar power purchasing agreement, the radar detect, I mean, the license plate readers.
I also had communications from the license plate readers.
Okay.
I also had communication from the license plate readers and the solar purchasing agreement.
Same. Also, I had a communication that expressed some concern about the Township's commitment to agriculture and our farming community. So I'm going to address that and I'm going to send it to the Board. Then I'll probably address it in a public meeting next time as well. Thanks.
Thank you. I had a communication about the license plate readers and I also had a communication that was a thank you to all the members of the Board for passing the Human Relations Ordinance and establishing the commission. So thank yous.
Cool.
Shared. So, okay. Up next, calendar items, number of items, anything we need to highlight. Not seeing anything on there. And we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
Remember the good old days when we'd sometimes go to midnight?